All right, we'll get started. Uh, this is the budget hearing for June 6, 2019. First up is the school department. Anyone who's gonna come up, please come in, take a seat.
Yeah.
Make sure the mic is on and we'll go from there.
I know.
Plenty of empty seats in this room, Mr. President.
If you moved up front, I could throw darts at you.
Come on, Terry.
You would.
Only you.
There shouldn't be, there should be more here though, right Joe?
There should be a lot more here.
Where's our colleagues?
Should we wait a few minutes for the rest of the day?
Underway, right?
Well, in fairness for the department heads who are here.
Absolutely.
We'll get started. It's being recorded, so first, thank you for coming in. We kinda changed things up the last couple time, or last two budgets, to make sure everyone has a chance to go over the budget if there's any concerns or where you think there might be a mistake or if you're generous. Or it could be a cut to help us out.
Thank you.
That's good. Sometimes when it comes to the budget night, we make cuts and then we hear the next day, well, why didn't you ask? So, we're gonna go over it. Just give a statement as to what you think your budget looks like, anything that we should know, and then we'll go from there. But thank you for coming here.
All right, thank you for having us and I'm just gonna share a brief overview and then Mr. Soto's gonna talk about the, some more specifics about the budget. But I'm pleased to share our recommended budget for FY 2020. The recommended budget of 98.4 million represents an increase of 3 million from FY 2019. This increase includes one-time revenue of 2.1 million, which primarily consists of hurricane relief funding for students that came to HPS after Hurricane Maria. And we are not gonna be able to depend on that, those resources in the future. The budget is designed to realize our vision of a pathway for every student and we're designing a school system where students graduate with an additional credential that provides for college, career, and community leadership. The budget prioritizes the continued support of the progress we have experienced to date and further supports our four strategic initiatives aligned to our priorities for the upcoming school year. It's focused on building staff capacity to ensure appropriate time on learning and utilize district-approved resources to strengthen core instruction and tiered supports. It expands and strengthens innovative, high-interest pathways for students. It's intended to strengthen two-way communication with families to understand, promote, and accelerate the learning and growth of their children. And then it's focused on continuing to build a professional culture where educators have an active voice, collaborate frequently, and communicate effectively to accelerate the learning of students. We've allocated our finite resources in accordance with these commitments. While we face yet another year of constrained resources, we did work aggressively to continue to invest in programs, materials, and positions that will impact the student learning experience. We did not touch class size in this budget. We did adjust for declines in enrollment, but we, we were able to maintain our class sizes. We were able to maintain the same level of per pupil allocation to the schools that we've done in prior years. So there, there isn't substantial cuts in our budget at all. It does represent our, you know, we've been able to maintain a degree of level service and we're hopeful that the state budget, we don't know yet, but we are hopeful that the state budget will be even more favorable to us than what we projected. And any of that new revenue would be able to do some even more strategic things for the kids of Holyoke in our, in our schools. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Anthony, who's gonna talk a little bit about some of the specifics in this budget.
Great, thank you. So.
Anthony, can you just pass one of your, to Councilor Vace? Thank you.
So, I, I don't wanna be repetitive, but I'll go through some of the numbers. This was the, the first year I've been working in, in school finance for about 13 years. And this upcoming budget year was the first year that I actually saw the state making an attempt to do something about the Chapter 70 formula. So, on the revenue side, things were, could have, obviously could be better 'cause we were still in a, in a budget year where we had to make some tough decisions. But we do see a, a light at the end of the tunnel in terms of them finally making an attempt to fix the Chapter 70 formula. Problem is, they, they plan on doing it over a seven-year period. It's not as fast as we would like it to be. So this upcoming year represents, you know, the, the first year of what could be seven years of change into the, the Chapter 70 formula. So we did get more Chapter 70, about 4 million. And, and as Steve mentioned, overall, our revenue, our adjusted revenue is up about $3 million from, from the previous year. On the expense side, we're, you know, we're making an investment in teacher salaries. We made some changes and we're expecting the, those increases to amount to about a million dollars in salaries, which represents 2.2% from the previous year. Health insurance continues to be a, an issue for us. So in our budget right now, we've budgeted a 15% increase from the previous year. And that was offset by a reduction in retired teacher health insurance. So the net impact to the budget is about $810,000, or 12%. And then, another area where, that was challenging for us on the general fund was having to take on more special ed out-of-district tuition costs. In previous years, we were able to offset some of those costs to circuit breaker funds, carryover circuit breaker funds. And this year, we had to absorb more of it on the general fund, which was about a million dollars. If you look at the slide 19, gives you a, a pretty decent picture of our, our budget process. So we start off with the governor's budget. Then we, it's a very collaborative process. We don't sit in a vacuum and make decisions. We involve all of the cabinet and we involve all principals. So we go through a process where we, we do a staff allocation. We right-size for enrollment. We bring in the principals, we bring in the chiefs. And their input is, they, they actually have an opportunity to decide what goes into their budget. And that's the second, the third column, which is the level service. So initially, when we did projections, we were looking at a $5.2 million deficit. And then when we got the level service request and right, right-sized the allocation for enrollment, that number went down to 4.1. And when we implemented some strategies and changes and certain cuts that we had to make and also the one-time revenue of 2.1 million, we were finally able to balance the budget. And I will say that this budget represents all of, represents what the House's budget was. I did look at the Senate budget and we do stand to gain revenue if that sticks. But we didn't go back and adjust these numbers for the Senate. As, as many of you know, we're, Holyoke is a, a district that is heavily reliant on, on state funding. So we're not like other communities that they, they pass their budget in December, right? Because they, they don't rely on state funding as much as we do. We monitor that every step of the way. And right now, at the Senate, it looks really favorable to the school department. And if that ends up sticking, we'll be back here in late July, early August to hopefully get, you know, correct the budget for whatever happens at the state, whatever the final budget is. So the state appropriation, or the, the budget appropriation is on slide 20. It just shows what, what you guys have in front of you in your budget book. It shows the net school spending amount, the items that aren't eligible for net school spending, which is transportation and adult ed. And then the items that are backed off of our budget to come up to the appropriation of 87 million.
Any questions, Councilor Vace?
Yeah, so we, we just, thanks, this is probably the most comprehensive document I've ever received from the school department, so thank you for, Steve and Anthony. I, I just, I just have a couple of simple questions.
Yeah.
So, and we, we look at our budget book.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's where we, we see that's, that's the, what the mayor said is our, our net school spending amount?
Yep.
And it's a, how do I back into that number from, from yours, from yours?
Slide 20.
Okay.
So if you go to slide 20, I think that'll help. So if you look, the adjusted net school spending number is 87.5 million. So out of, out of net school spending, the city takes about $150,000 for admin costs. And then we add back in any charter reimbursement that we get to get the adjusted 87 million. On top of that, you add back, add in transportation costs and leases, which, I'm not sure if you remember, we, those costs were up, the lease cost was about $320,000 before we consolidated a couple of years ago. We went from renting four floors to renting two floors. So that's why that number's down from three years ago. And then, this other line is $200,000, is money that the city gives us to, to pay for Medicaid billing, right? So this, this increase by $100,000, which is where Dr. Zright and the mayor had conversations, and the mayor was willing to contribute another $100,000 to, above what the, the payment is to the Medicaid billing company. So we, we contract with Lower Pioneer Valley and they do all the Medicaid billing. We pay them about $100,000 and then the city gets anywhere between 1.2 and 1.6 million dollars in revenue that doesn't go to the schools, that, that's built into the city's budget. We're hoping that that revenue goes up and we know that homeless transportation costs are, are also up and the city gets to keep that reimbursement. So out of those funds, the mayor had, had agreed to give an additional $100,000 to help us expand the dual-language pre, uh, pre-K program. We're opening a couple of new classes.
Yeah, one at, one at E&amp;Y and one at Metcalf and additional pre-K 'cause the demand was so great for the dual-language program across the city, so. And we need the one-time cost to open the classroom. We'll see the money back a year later in Chapter 70, but it represents 40 new students to the school district who, you know, in many cases, we don't think would've chosen the Holyoke Public Schools unless they could get into the dual-language program.
So, that gets us to what our total operating budget would be. And then from that, the city backs out insurance cost of 7.2 million and the, our, our portion of the retiree pension cost of 1.9 million. So out of that 96 million, the city takes away 9.2 million so that we can pay our, our share of those costs. And what's left is the 87 million in total. And that's what you should see in your, in the budget book.
That's what I see in the budget book. Okay. All right, that helps. And then, I guess just a couple of questions, just for, nothing to do with the budget, so I mean, at least from a city perspective. I guess you, you mentioned we have a increase in special ed for out-of-district. I, I guess I'd wanna know why that happens. And then I just would wanna know what impact, if any, from the closure of the School of Justice on Whiting Farms? And then, and then what impact, if any, for, for charter school, charter school reimbursement? So if, if that's gonna change from the Senate budget with that, with the, and if that, if that is a change from the Senate budget, can, can the city, you know, get its $100,000 back? Is, is there a way to get that back, I guess that's my question? So, there's three questions here. So one is the sped, one is the Apollo Fair School of Justice, and then one is what impact, if any, would the Senate change have on the, on, on the city's net school spending?
Okay, so I'll try to answer those one at a time. The first one you asked was on the sped out-of-district. So I do feel that, that we're just, we're looking at an increase of about 3%, which is primarily rates. We're not seeing a ton more students go out of district, but the cost for those students is going up slightly. The million that I mentioned earlier, there's three funding sources that we use to pay all of our out-of-district costs. We end up paying around $7.5 million in, in total for out-of-district tuition. A portion of that is funded on the general fund. A portion of that is funded on circuit breaker, which is a revolving account. And then another portion of that is funded on a grant, the sped 240 IDEA grant. What we've done in the past was they allow you to carryover circuit breaker money and spend it over a 24-month period. So, as, as a way to soften some of the cuts that we have had to make, we've reduced, we've used that carryover revolving account to minimize the impact on the general fund. What we're seeing now is that our revolving funds are drying up more because we're having to tap into them more. And we don't have that circuit breaker carryover, but we still have those costs and we, we're obligated to pay for those costs. So we simply shift them from that, that funding source to the general fund and that's why it's gone up. But if you look at the total costs, it's going from 7.2 million to 7.5 million. It's just the impact on the general fund. More of it is going on the general fund and less of it is going on other funding sources. Does that help?
Yeah, I just, just wanna get a little background on that, then if you just go on the other two points.
I can, I can answer the Apollo Fair question. I think you had filed an order about that, which I did respond to. We, at this point, we have not seen any students enroll yet back in the Holyoke Public Schools. The, the Apollo Fair School is moving the chickapee. But what I've been told by talking to people who are closer to the school is that this summer, we would, that we should expect to see some students come back to the district. We did send flyers or letters out to those families because we were able to get the addresses of those students who attend the school who go to, who live in Holyoke. But we have not yet seen any students enrolling. The high school thinks that, again, that in the summer, that's when high school students tend to make decisions about where they're gonna go next year. And as students realize, becomes clear to them that the school will no longer be, be in Holyoke, we do anticipate seeing some increase. Now, if the number gets high, we're gonna have to talk to the state about what, because we wouldn't see funds for those kids until the year after. Now, we could make a special, you know, we, we, we will, we've been in dialogue with the Department of Ed about it and they've asked us. But as of right now, we have not seen an increase. We will communicate with them if we see waves of kids coming back. There's about 100 and, I think 10 or 120 students who are there. That live in Holyoke, that are returning. Remember, the seniors graduate, but 9th, 10th, and 11th graders who could potentially come to, back to the school system. If we received 120 kids, that would have a huge impact on our staffing. And your third question?
Uh, just about the Senate budget, I guess, what would, yeah, how would that help us?
So the Senate budget, what I, what I saw was an increase in Chapter 70 money and I saw an increase in the charter reimbursement from what was in the House's budget. And then, when I, when I looked at the net impact, it was over a million dollars. But again, we can't really, you know, I, I'm hearing from, through the grapevine that we really can't count on those numbers. I, we won't really know what the impact is gonna be until probably July 4th, whenever the, the state, unless there's any veto. So the governor does have an opportunity to veto whatever the conference committee puts, puts forward. But we usually don't find out until after July 4th what the state's final budget is. We're going with what's, what the House is and if it turns out to be better, we'll be back here explaining what those changes are and how it impacted our budget.
So just to boil it down, so there's really no, I mean, so we wanna, I mean, I've been hearing that for a few years, that the, the one program we have that attracts out-of-district students is really the dual-language program. So what you're, what you're saying is that extra $100,000 is gonna allow 40 more students from out-of-district to come to Holyoke to be, to participate in a dual-language program?
It's not out-of-district, it's Holyoke residents.
Oh, Holyoke, okay, okay.
Yeah, but they, they are typi, but we, we understand. Many of those students would've typically gone to Catholic schools or private schools, I should say, or many of them would've choiced out. But they're all, we don't, we, we don't have enough space to allow folks from other communities to come into our dual-language program because the, we have a waiting list for Holyoke residents.
Oh, good, okay, so it's Holyoke residents, okay.
That's right, it's only Holyoke residents, yeah.
So if we didn't have the extra $100,000, there'd be 40 Holyoke residents that, that couldn't go to the dual-language program?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
And, and there's no other, there's no other room in your budget to, to, to pick that up? It really, really would have to come from?
Well, it's, it's opening two additional classrooms that are, and the way the funding formula works is you get money for each student, you know, you get money for students enrolled on October 1st of the year before. So to launch a new classroom, you have to, it's a one-time expense to pay the teacher's salary and pre-K, it's also an assistant and the furniture. And so, we're paying for, we're, we're assuming 100,000, half of the cost to open one of the classrooms. And the mayor was very generous in looking at, you know, the fact that he, we do expect the city to get some more revenue from homeless and from Medicaid reimbursement. That, so he's assuming the, or the city's assuming the cost of one of those classrooms and we're taking, we're assuming the cost of the other classroom.
So there's, but there's really no other way to fund that, other than through this?
No, I mean, we, no. I mean, at this point, no. I mean, if, if additional, you know, we, we have other needs as well. I mean, if we have additional resources, that could be part of our conversation down the road. But at this point, we don't know. There is no, at this point, the answer to that question is no. And we didn't wanna turn people away who were interested in coming back to the school system.
All right, Councilor Murphy?
Yeah, just a few comments about money and then a few comments about statistics. So the lease, is that for the administrative office, the 190? Is that, the entire cost is 190?
Yeah, it fluctuates, so 190 is the average. So that, that includes the, the rent payment and then the, the things that, that do fluctuate are the operating costs. So it's, it's all comes in on the same bill. There's the rent portion and then there's operating costs. The operating costs go up or down.
And that comes out of the city budget, correct?
Yeah, it comes, well, it comes out of this line right here, yes.
Yeah, okay. And not assuming what the future's gonna be, but assuming, I'm gonna rephrase that. Anticipating the future, are we expecting that we are going to be leaving that, those administrative offices and potentially saving some money?
I, I was here two years ago and I laid out eight options to the city council and, you know, we did a, we did an independent analysis. We priced out what each option would cost, but the decision to leave that is, you know, that, that, really, laid out the options, I don't know. We don't have anywhere we can go right now. I know there's talks about if, if we do get these new buildings, there's definitely an opportunity to take, you know, have central office in like a Metcalf or a Lawrence or something like that. But without those, without that actually happening, there's no, there's no space for us to go. I mean, we did lay out eight options. I don't know what option is most desirable for the city, but those options are, are there.
Okay. And can you explain the Medicaid part to me? That's certainly not for our employees.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a federal Medicaid program that, for services that are provided to students, forgive me for not knowing everything about it, you know, our sped director would be able to tell you a lot more about it. But services that are provided to students, we're able to participate in a, in a Medicaid reimbursement, federal Medicaid reimbursement process where we file the, we get, we look at services, we do random moment time studies. We look at services that all of our kids are receiving, both out-of-district and in-district. And we file a claim and through that claim, we get a reimbursement for some of those services that we're providing with, with our staff. So that reimbursement tends to be anywhere from 1 million to 1.6 million. That, that's revenue that actually, so we do the work, our, our staff providing the services. We hire a company, Lower Pioneer Valley, to help us with the Medicaid billing filing. We file it and then the city gets about 1 to 1.6 million. I'm looking at the last five or six years at what the trend was. It's anywhere between those two numbers. So that's revenue that goes into the city's budget. You guys use it to, you know, whatever the city spends its funding on, but it doesn't go back to the schools.
Okay, okay. And retirement and unemployment, and I know you indicated that this comes back to the city, but, so I'm gonna ask, I don't really, I'm assuming retirement is, how much of that 1.9 million is unemployment?
Unemployment is not in that number and I apologize if it still says unemployment.
Okay.
We now budget unemployment costs on our budget. That change was made last year. That is a typo and I can take that out. That's, that's literally retirement for, for non-teachers. So that's our portion of it. And we got these, we've got these numbers from the, your auditor, the city auditor. We sit down and we agree to what the number that the school department has to pay.
Okay. Now, I just wanna go over some of the statistics you provided and you're probably not gonna be happy you provided them, but you provided them, so. Can you, accountability system targets, can you explain, define that for me?
The state sets, sets accountability targets for schools based on performance. On MCAS, for MCAS scores, there, it's a range of them, for absenteeism, for students enrolled in advanced courses. And that, those, that accountability system, last, this year was the first year that we received this newly-designed accountability system.
So it includes absenteeism and graduation?
MCAS scores, graduation rates, yeah.
Okay, okay. And that 72% on the graduation, that is, I'm assuming what just happened?
Yeah, so the, our target was 70%. Graduation rate lags one year behind.
Oh, so that's last year's?
That's last year's gradu, yeah. So we've already hit our target that the state set for us. Our target was 70% and our graduation rate was 72%.
With all due respect to the state, you tell them that they should not expect graduation rates less than 100%. They may not get them, but they shouldn't expect them.
And the state also wants it to be a, you know, not a impossible goal to reach in one year, but a stretch goal.
Let me, chronic absenteeism, and I'm gonna ask you to do a few things for me and I would, I would like to get a report by grade and by school, if possible, in terms of the absenteeism.
Okay.
All right. I mean, I know.
By grade and by school?
By grade and by school. I've spoken with Betty Lichtenstein, who obviously provides a service to try to help offset somebody absenteeism.
Say that again, who was that?
Betty.
Oh, Betty, yeah, yeah.
I see. And, you know, we, we've had discussions, but she's asked me to make sure I bring it to your attention, so I'm doing that.
So can I just ask a clarifying question? Do you wanna see that for the full year last year or do you wanna see to date?
I would like, so, I would like to see if it's possible to see the last two years and write to this year to date.
Okay, last two years and this year to date?
The history. Because I wanna see a few things and, and with all due respect to everybody, and my wife's just told me I say that way too much, so I'm gonna stop saying that. So I wanna make sure that we don't have one or two or three schools where we're seeing excessive absences or in a, in certain grades, we're seeing excessive absences. I wanna see if there's a trend and if there's a trend, then we have a better option into how to deal with that trend. But just from an educational standpoint, I mean, I think the, the statistic that Betty quoted was that it was approximately 22% absences every day. That means that in the city of Holyoke, on average, every student misses nine weeks of school. And, and that just is an astounding figure and it makes me wonder how we can potentially improve, improve graduation rates and how those students that are missing nine, and obviously, some are missing 10, 12, 14 weeks of school, how do they end up being able to keep up with their peers and keep up with what the, the goals are? And obviously, so I, I would like those statistics to kinda help me see if there's some kinda pattern there. And the last thing, in terms of suspensions, and this is, again, I'm assuming this is, suspensions are primarily the upper grades. I don't know if that would be true?
Well, I would say primarily 3rd through 12th grade.
3rd grade?
3rd grade, 3rd, yeah. I mean, there, there, we have, there are suspensions throughout, but we, we, not as, not as common in K to 2.
Wow, I'm amazed that they're common at 3rd.
They're not, you're right, they're not as common, but I mean, we, I'm not, I'm not gonna say that we don't have suspensions in 3rd grade.
Okay. And, and I'm gonna say this for two reasons. And I, I see where your statistics were on track to hit the goal of 22, 2200. And I'm gonna go back in history here. At one point, I And I'm going to go back in history here. At one point, I had a young man that I knew that I was advocating for uh, who got suspended from school. And I asked, why didn't he get detention? And I was told at that point, we don't have detention. Do we have detention?
Yeah, we do have detention.
Okay. Uh, so, I mean, again, I, that, that's a concern. I don't want people getting eliminated from school, but I also don't want people who are disrupting classes allowed to continue to disrupt them so that we don't suspend them. And I, I, again, I, I've only seen it from my own personal view a few times, but in those cases, it was uh either a total elimination, in which case I've seen young, young, primarily young men fall behind and then get frustrated and then end up doing things that they don't want to be doing or they shouldn't be doing. So again, all those statistics, I appreciate them. And if, if possible, I would just like to go from 7th grade to, to 12th grade on, on suspensions, if I can get a statistic on those as well. And I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Anthony, a couple of questions for you. Um, on page 20, with the fiscal 20 budget on the bottom page, the charter tuition and school choice was previously 15 million and now it's down to zero. Can you explain that?
Okay, so it's, it's definitely not down to zero, but what we're not doing is, is backing it out of the city's budget, backing it out of the school department's appropriation. So if you look at your budget book, you'll see those costs. Now, in the budget, those costs previously weren't appropriated anywhere. And if you remember, uh, the last year, we had come and there was an issue with the charter assessment and it was pretty confusing as to why the city council hadn't seen any of those cherry sheet numbers. So this year, we, this upcoming year, the city council and auditor and everyone, you know, uh, we were all on board with appropriating that right into the budget so that you guys get an opportunity to see what those numbers are now. Instead of find out in January that there was an impact and it was just very confusing. And I think this is a much more accurate representation of what the school department's budget is by including those costs.
Okay.
So um, they're not, they're there. They're just not being backed out of our appropriation. They're included in our appropriation, which is why they show up in the school department's page when you, when you look at our budget now. Previously, they weren't.
Okay. Uh, and on page 27, uh, basically the, the budget overview, so the foundation budget, you, you're stating that the enrollment's 6330, is that the enrollment as of right now?
What page?
Uh, page 27?
Yes, that's what, what's called foundation enrollment. Um, and it's how the city, how the state funds schools. Um, our in-district enrollment is closer to 5200, but that enrollment number includes um choice and charter students. And I do have, um, I do have a slide in there that, that explains that a little bit or actually, no, I don't, but I, I have information about enrollment and how that works.
That's a total.
That's total, including charter schools.
And whole, clearly about 5200.
Yeah, within our district, yeah, about 50, 5200.
And, and out of that amount, so 86,800 is what the state pays towards the education? And the city pays 11, or 86 million? And the city pays 11 million? Is that how that works?
75, so the chapter 70 number is the one you want to look at. It's 75.7 million.
Okay.
And the city pays 11 million.
Towards the education, okay, in the total.
Yeah, so it ends up being about 12.8%. But that doesn't include transportation.
Right, it's not, okay.
Because it's not part of what, what the state considers. What they do is they say, here's 75 million in state money, but you got to kick in 11 and you can't pay for transportation with that.
Right, okay. And, and getting, getting to transportation, I know a year or two ago, we had an issue with the, the cost and trying to save money and new busing and new contracts. How is that working out? Is still an increase in, in the cost of busing the students?
I mean, the, the route that we ended up going with automatically comes with a, a 3% CPI increase. Uh, we do have another grade going to Veritas and what, what, there isn't, to answer your question, there's a, there's an increase in transportation, but it's not because of what we did last year. Um, the main reason that transportation is going up is because of McKinney-Vento, homeless transportation. We had only budgeted for about $800,000, which was the trend. And for some reason, um, we're looking at this year about a million dollars in expenses for McKinney-Vento, for our, for our homeless population. Um, so when we're developing the budget for next year, we're including, you know, what we're trending. The city does get a reimbursement. I believe the reimbursement's about 36% of whatever the school department pays. So we budget the full amount and then when I do the end-of-year report in December, um, the city automatic, or the state automatically cuts a reimbursement check to the, to the city. That is probably just built into your, your operating budget.
Okay. Yeah, one more question for you, then I have one quick one for Dr. Drake. Um, the food service, how is that working out in the class of that? Is that still out of Springfield or?
It's working out great. Um, we're still, you know, what I will say is from where we were two years ago, we've made significant improvements. I mean, we got salad bars in every school. We got brand-new cafeteria tables in every school. And the, the management company that we're working with is just doing a phenomenal job. Next year, we, we plan on implementing a few gardens around where we'll get the students involved in growing um fresh fruit or, or fresh vegetables and then potentially like coming and, and using some of that that they uh do. It, it's been amazing to see the increase. We had the same vendor, Sodexo, that we had, that we had two years ago, but the management is all different and they, they have just been an incredible partner. Um, the food service revolving account is self-sustaining, so as, as part of the contract, it generates a $550,000 surplus, which is then reinvested, could only be reinvested back into the program. So we can make our, our food more palatable, we can offer more choices, we can, you know, upgrade our equipment. We have a five-year capital plan right now. Um, it's, it's been, it's been a great, it's been going well. Better than where we were. We've still got some ways to go and we, we're implementing breakfast in the classroom. Um, at, we've implemented it at the high school. So we're right now, 100% of our district is breakfast in the classroom. There's not a lot of districts that can say that.
I think that's important.
And there's only a handful of districts in the entire country that can say they're doing breakfast in the classroom in the, in the high school. And we're doing it here in Holyoke, so that's a credit to the staff at Holyoke High, the principal and, and quite frankly, the, the management company that has carried out, you know, a, a, a well-thought-out plan and the, the school and the teachers have been supportive of it. And in one, I mean, in three days of implementing that, we went from only 10% of our students at Holyoke High eating breakfast at school to 76% in three days.
Yeah, that's great.
Our goal is to be at 80%, but um we hope that the program is better next year.
That's important. I think that's vital to, to have that. Um, and, and Dr. Drake, real one quick question. And, and I know, um, you know, looking at the, the budget figures and as Council Murphy stated, you know, and I know you've been trying to work less than five, you know, days off out of school and that's important. How is the, uh, parental involvement going? And I know you've been pushing that for a number of years because a lot of these kids don't have a strong family structure at home. How is that going in the different school systems?
Yeah, I mean, I think it varies by school. And I think in some schools, we've seen major improvements and others, um, I'm not pleased, you know, pretty stagnant. Um, and, but overall, uh, we're going to present to the school committee at our next meeting, the results from the survey, the parent survey. We did see some, some gains and, um, from the parent perspective, particularly around the school communicating progress and then how you can help your child with learning at home. We made sure, this year, we pushed every school to have two parent showcases or learning nights, a minimum of two. And, uh, you know, almost um across the board, every school did, did two. Um, so, but, you know, again, I would, I wouldn't say that, you know, um, I have a monthly parent meeting with um PTO leaders from every school. And in some schools, we've seen inconsistent presence um from those schools. And so we have to get better um at, at a few of the schools. But I think from last year to this year, we've seen some improvements, but I, you know, um, I, I would, I would say we still got a, a long way to go to make it universally strong across all our schools.
I, I've seen a couple of the school committee meetings and especially the one with Betty Lichtenstein there and, and see the involvement with her and she's doing. But, you know, I think that's important, the parental involvement. It's key to getting kids to school and, and staying in school. So whatever you can do to continue that and to, to show progress. And I, I think that's very important.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
Council Solley?
Uh, thank you. Uh, Anthony, um, you totally lost me on the Medicare thing. I hate to drag you back to that.
Okay.
So we've got somewhere between 1 million and 1.6 million that we're going to get reimbursed.
Every year. Yeah, every year, you guys, the, the city builds that revenue source into their operating budget.
What, what page can I find that on? And what, what number do we use? A million or millions?
It's not in the school department's budget. It's part of your revenue. It's, it's what goes to help pay for police department, fire department, whatever you're, whatever's in your operating budget. It's just another revenue source to the city that the school department does not have access to.
So I'd have to find that somewhere in this budget book?
You'd, uh, I don't think that budget book has revenue. That's just expenses. So there's a lot, a lot of revenue that makes up the total expenses that are in there. Um, I'm sure, you know, you can talk to your auditor and, and figure out where all your money comes from.
It's in the recap sheet.
The recap sheet.
The recap sheet.
To find it though.
Yeah. Do you, you happen to know which number was used, 1 million or 1.6 million?
I don't, I wasn't involved in developing.
I have to go dig for that one?
Yeah, okay. I focused on the school department's budget. I didn't, I don't know how the rest of the city's budget is built.
Okay.
And I'm not, I wasn't trying to be wise. I, I really don't know.
No, no, I, I, I get it. I, we'll go dig for that. All right, thanks.
Council McGivern?
Thank you, and gentlemen, thank you. Um, Anthony, just, I know you're spending or, or paying for unemployment now, but can you just tell us the past, uh, past year and what the future, this coming year is going to be in terms of unemployment?
Yeah, we're budgeting 600,000 uh for this upcoming school year. And I, I believe my first year here, we had spent around $900,000. And we haven't hit that number in the, in the last three years. So I think right now, as it stands, we're right around half a million dollars for this current year. Um, and I don't, I don't anticipate that number to, uh, you know, I think that's where we're going to end up landing for this current year. And then what we're building into the budget for next year is 600,000, which is a reduction from what we had appropriated. Um, we had appropriated 750,000 in the current budget. Um, so that helps. That was one of the, one of the strategies that we used to balance the budget was to be a little more aggressive in, in budgeting for unemployment.
And I, I mean, our early projections on non-renewals of staff for next year um is less than what we've had over the last few years. So people that would be eligible to collect unemployment, just looking at the numbers, um, are, you know, is significantly less than what we've had in the past. Or I don't want to say significantly, but less than what we've seen in the past.
And the next, net school spending figure, um, the 11 million figure, that's the bare minimum that we have to meet? If we add everything together, are we above that?
Well, in theory, you would be above that by the $100,000.
Just the $100,000 that's coming in?
Yep.
Otherwise, we're meeting it just at bare minimum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Council Barley?
Yeah, just want to, Anthony, so in, in our budget, I, I, I can't, I can't back into the number. You're going to have to help me. Or just, um, I've just been playing around with this. And you don't have to do it now, because now it's ridiculous. But um, the number proposed by the mayor is 25,021,247. That, that's, that's what it says in our budget book.
No, uh, that's probably for one line. Um, I don't have, can I see what you're looking at?
Yeah, I'll, why don't I do this? Why don't I, why don't I make a copy? I'll, I'll scan it in my computer. I'll just email it to you and Steve tomorrow. Because we're going to get really bogged if, if we start doing that now.
That's fine.
And then maybe I can, uh, just ask you my own question.
So I know there's three line, there's personnel services, which is salaries, then there's expenses, which is non-salaries. And then below that is all your cherry sheet items, which is the charter school assessment, the school choice. And all of that adds up to the 87, 87 million that.
Yeah, I, I see that here and I, and I see it tying, tying into your, your number on, on page 20. I see that. But what I don't see is, uh, so this line is, I have to call 57,000. I just don't see, I don't see that number. And then I don't see the Holyoke required local contribution of 11,074,770. And I just, I just got a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just got that.
It's two, the, the, one, one of them is revenue and one of them is expenses.
Expenses, yes. I copied that, but I just, I don't see how they're explained in here. So we would just have expenses.
I mean, I'd be happy to sit down with you or, or um explain it in an email.
Yeah, maybe, uh, we'll, we'll figure it out. Uh, but let, let me just at least send this to you.
Sure.
It's page 28, so, or if you, I can at least do that. Um, just what, what a, uh, uh, the enrollment, Steve, what, uh, you, you said is declining, so, uh, and I, I think I glanced in, I think I saw an enrollment number, but what, what, what is the overall enrollment?
Yeah, so our enrollment right now is about 5240. Um, and it has declined, it declined a little bit from last year. We've added more pre-K seats, um, which has mitigated the loss of some students who have gone. Uh, if you remember last year, the Hampden Charter School opened um in, um, where are they, in West Springfield? Yeah, so we lost about 30 or 40, 30 to 40 students to them. Um, and that sort of was, that, some of that was mitigated by our um, uh, expansion of early childhood seats. Um, overall, though, the enrollment of kids going to choice charter or Holyoke Public Schools has declined in the city of Holyoke. So the number of school-aged children on the foundation formula has declined as well. Um, and our, and, and subsequently, our enrollment has declined a little bit. Um, we hope, you know, we hope that it'll be steady next year, um, especially if we have more kids coming from Apollo. We are opening the new um uh pre-K classrooms, the dual-language classrooms. So I would expect it to, to be stable, uh, more stable, but um, we'll see. We do have, we did see an increase in choicing out of the district. Um, and I think it's, um, some of that is also, uh, you know, as you know, Blessed Sacrament has, their enrollment has declined too. And many of those students have, that have gone Blessed Sacrament are either going to our dual-language program, but many of them have also decided to choice out to surrounding communities as well.
Yeah, and, and do we, do we study, you know, the, the, the kids that are choicing out and do we study that? I mean, either demographically or, I think, I mean, do we, is that, is that in here as well?
No, it's not in there. We have a whole report on charter and choice. We can send you to that. We, we actually shared it with the school committee at the last meeting, so it's a public document we could share with you. It tells you by which town, what schools. Happy to share that with you. So you can see the analysis of where kids are going and what choices they're making. I mean, what we do know is that families really want the dual-language program here. So that's obviously something we want to continue to expand. There's a tremendous interest. Um, we know there's, you know, um, a need for that. Um, we're in, you know, we're, we're right now looking, and I'm interested in looking at what's going to keep middle school families from leaving. Um, and we're, you know, I'd like, we're looking at, you know, different options um to entice families or to, to give them incentives to stay for our middle school programs. We opened um two new programs last year. Um, and so, um, we know what works at the, uh, you know, we know the dual-language program is attractive. Um, and we, but we've got to find similar options for students in middle school.
And then just on the, uh, a topic I, I filed, I haven't taken it up in committee yet because I just wanted, I just, I just wanted to see how it ran the end of the year. Um, our cafe downstairs, for, for which there's, that is run by Sodexo? Or, or supplied by Sodexo?
Yeah, so they, they uh run that operation. Um, and as you've seen, they're pretty modest pricing, but it really is the school department. We, what we initially did was we wanted to have that at 57 Suffolk Street. Um, and when we consolidated from four floors to two floors, it was just impossible. Um, the, you know, uh, the city offered the space to us and allowed us to, really want to provide an incentive for some of our staff who, you know, don't really make a lot of money to be able to get, uh, you know, a coffee for a reasonable price or a salad for a reasonable price. But that's funded completely out of our um food service revolving account. Um, it's, it's not in our, the general fund, it's not in the operate, it's part of, it's really Holyoke Public Schools that's providing that service. We're just getting Sodexo to do it for us. We're just getting Sedexol to do it for us, just like they're doing our food service program. The food service program belongs to us. We just have them managing it.
Oh, okay. So who?
Who pays?
Yeah.
The school department pays out of their own revolving account. But the money that we're receiving is enough to cover the cost. It doesn't generate a profit.
Okay. Is there an agreement between the city of Holyoke and the school department relative to that space?
The city of Holyoke and the school? No. We're not paying rent or anything like that.
But there's no agreement whatsoever?
No.
No written agreement?
Nope. There's no exchange of funding between the schools and the city for that. So I don't know that...
So if a Sedexol employee or somebody's in that office and trips and cracks their head, what happens then?
That's a city employee. They work for the school department.
Okay, so they're not Sedexol employees in there?
No. Those are school employees.
Employees.
The management of that whole facility, they help manage it. You know, they come to me, they ask me questions, and I made some decisions on what I wanted to see in there. They're working on behalf of the Holyoke Public Schools. The employees working there are Holyoke Public Schools employees. The delivery trucks that you see bring, if they're bringing food or anything like, that's all. We actually cook any food that gets prepped or cooked or anything gets done out of our Dean Campus, or PEC. So it's prepped at our school and then it's brought to, brought here every morning. But it's really Holyoke Public Schools that's providing that service.
And the supplies are purchased through the revolving fund that you have from, okay, that you purchased that from Sedexol?
No, we don't purchase it from Sedexol. There's many vendors that we purchase, like, you know, sauce or coffee.
There's a lot of vendors, okay.
Yeah, Sedexol doesn't sell food products.
Okay, but how do they manage it? They're managing that cafe, right? So did they do the build-out or something? Or how did that?
Our facilities department helped, you know, painting, put in rug. Sedexol didn't have anything to do with that. Our facilities department did that work, you know, Whitney Anderson and his team.
Okay, alright, thank you.
One quick question I had was the health insurance. I know you said it went up. Is there any consideration of the GIC? Can you do the GIC? Any views of that?
Yeah, we did, I mean, we had representatives from the GIC come meet with representatives from the city. The school department is a department of the city, so right now, we do whatever the city does. They did, they did do a presentation on what their rates are, what their plans look like. I think that, I think that the rates are very favorable. And I think personally, it is something that the city should look into as a whole. But we missed the boat in terms of being able to get in. You have to declare by January 1st if you wanna get into the GIC for July 1. I don't know, I know that when we did meet, I mean, there were representatives from personnel. There were representatives from various city departments. Rory was also there. It looked really favorable in terms of the rates. There's some things that you need to consider, you know, like copays going up. But the rates themselves, I think prescription costs would go up, you know, to the individual employee. The rates themselves and the impact on the city seemed very favorable. But what the city does with that information, I'm not sure what's gonna be done.
Yeah, and the unions are not, have not, I know the unions are not super, you know, you know, they're not, they don't, they have concerns about going to the GIC. There's definitely some pushback from the unions about doing it. I mean, we think it's in the best interest of the city to move to the GIC, but it would take away the annual negotiating ability that unions have to negotiate.
Plan design.
The plan design. So, you know, certainly understand that. But we do think it's in the best interest in the fiscal health of the city and to our employees would end up benefiting, we think, from moving to the GIC. It's not, but it's not our exclusive decision. We don't have that ability to make those calls.
Alright, there's nothing else for the school department. Thank you very much for coming down. We appreciate it. I know there are certain things people ask for. If you can email that to them, it'd be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Next is the law department. Law department is not here, Mayor. They're running late. There was a request a couple of days ago about purchasing. They have a scheduling conflict, so the law department's not here. Have procurement purchasing come in in order to get you before you unfortunately have to take off. And you're page four? Alright, so we're on page four now. With that, we'll turn it over to you. And if you have any statements or anything you wanna share, and then we'll go from there.
I, no, I think I'll just go over the budget. After looking at last year's budget hearing, I started to draw down from 18 into 19. Part of that was our new phone system. And the increase in telephone usage charges is, I think the mayor addressed this, was going from the IT budget into the purchasing budget. It covers the phone usage for the whole city. So it was just a matter of going from one budget item to the, back into purchasing. In terms of the expenses, drawing down from this fiscal year into next fiscal year, the repair and maintenance of office equipment, that $500 is a placeholder. We have a very specialized printer in purchasing. So in case that needs a repair or maintenance, that would be a placeholder for that cost. We have repair and maintenance of telephone equipment. We do have a new phone system. In the event that some phones need to be reprogrammed, or we need new phones, or phones with additional options, there is a cost to that. So budgeting some money for that. Education and training, the state now is offering purchasing courses over the summer. And each course is $200. I'm a member of the Massachusetts Association of Purchasing Professionals, and they've increased their dues from $50 to $100. So all that would be part of that line item. The telephone and usage charges, budgeting a little bit higher because the usage is different by each department. This is a citywide bill. It encompasses all the departments. We pay the bills from the purchasing line item. Our postage, trying to reduce our mailings by being more efficient with email and things of that sort. So I anticipate at least a level funding for that. Office and professional advertising. Right now, we have 25 bids as of this midway through the year. This advertising covers our legal requirement to advertise the bids in the Holyoke Sun. The office and professional supplies covers, we have a lease on a printer, a copier. All of the office supplies comes out of that line item. Central copier, this is the copier located outside of the purchasing office. It's kind of an overflow copier for Parks and Rec, CPA, Veteran Services have used it, Auxiliary Police. So the copier itself is pretty well antiquated in terms of being able to get parts and things. So I'm just gonna let that ride itself out and talk to the departments and have them try to make arrangements for use of another copier. It's on its last leg.
What's a new one gonna cost?
A lease or a purchase. If you purchase outright, they're expensive. The school department has a lease program, which at some point, I have done an inventory and talked to our IT department about trying to streamline our copier in our printing program. One of the things I do hope that the council supports is our partnership with Wally Computer to take over the IT services. There are some efficiencies to be had by streamlining our printing and copying. Right now, each department is kinda on their own in terms of purchasing a fax machine, a copier. If you were to walk around each department, you'll see different color copiers, different color printers. Each one has a different toner, and it's, there's nothing cohesive about it. My vision would be to try to get a centralized system, whereas maybe one office has four printers or copiers, maybe they can do with one larger one. There's some benefits to that in terms of maintenance and having service in case something goes down versus just going out and buying something off WB Mason. So there's different pricing for a lease and/or purchasing, or purchasing straight out, depending on the functions and if you want color, if you, you know, but you're probably looking in like the $375 range for a lease. I know, Counsel, you were in my office and I showed you, so those two machines are probably around $375 a month.
Thank you.
Thank you. In-state travel, I've been holding a little bit, attending meetings and things of such, trying to stay more in the western part of the state. But with trainings with the state for purchasing courses, as well as meetings from the purchasing organization I'm part of, that draws me out to the eastern part of the state, and I anticipate just kinda keeping that level. And then the insurance is my bond. I have to have a $50,000 bond.
Any questions? Counsel Murphy?
Yeah, not so much specific to your budget, but just involving a number of expenses that all departments have, like the repair and maintenance, office and professional supplies and things along that line. So I know they each have a line, or most of them have a line item for those issues. So if, are they in a position where they go out and purchase that? Or do they come and get it from a central supply?
We have a contract with one vendor that supplies our office supplies, and each department dictates their needs for the year.
So, and is it just done as need be?
Yes, yeah.
Would, and we have one supplier. Is that supplier contracted through your office, or?
They're on state contract.
Okay. So probably not, but would there be any benefit if everything, and that's, I'm trying to give you more work, but if everything came through your office, that we just somewhat made a commitment for X number of dollars as opposed to we got $3,000 here, $2,500 there? Is there any potential saving? I know in my previous life and in my other career, that, you know, by working collectively and making that proposal collectively, we ended up with pretty substantial savings. Because they ended up knowing there was one place to go, be you. I assume the shipments would come and then somebody would have to be delivering. But other than that, I mean, just looking to try to find ways to save money.
That would require space. That would require, it would require probably additional personnel. What I would say is, central supply with the schools, they had that model where they would buy in bulk and everything would be stored, and then the schools would go in and they'd get what they need. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there's a tremendous amount of waste. Because if you order 100 cases of paper and then you have, how do you, would you manage, you know, checking out? Or who's getting a box of pens and things of that sort? What I'm hoping to do this year, and what I'm glad that Tanya's settled in a little bit, is one of the things I created is we have a purchasing manual. So I sent that out to the department heads in May. And Tanya, myself, and our office manager Brenda Sheridan, we're gonna be meeting individually with each department head. Whereas, I'm gonna talk about the purchasing manuals, some policies and procedures. I'm also gonna give each department head a list of all of the vendors they have used throughout the year to see if there's a way that we can collapse and utilize and try to get the department heads and/or their staff a little bit more aware of just how much is going out. We have a tremendous amount of paper. We print over 10,000 purchase orders. You know, and so looking for ways to kinda streamline, be more efficient, you know, sending bids out electronically, reducing the carbon footprint, things of that sort. So not to say that it's not possible. I don't know how efficient it would be.
Thank you. And then just, I know we met when I first got back on this council, and we talked about training on the computer system. And I know that was a concern you had. It was also a concern several other department had had, that we don't give enough hands-on training to make sure that we're using the system to its maximum effectiveness. So I know that's not in your budget, but since you were the first one to bring it up to me at my meetings, I would just suggest that that's something that we need to look at in order to make our departments more effective, more efficient, less prone to any errors. And it would seem to me like it would be cost-effective if we were able to do that. So I thank you for your thoughts on that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? There's no questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next is the tax collector. Page seven, I believe. Page seven.
Hit it once for the green light. Thanks. My budget is pretty straightforward. You'll see some increases, obviously, in personal services, but those are all contractual with my two union employees that are in my office. Longevity did go up because my second clerk reaches her 10 years this year, so that's the only reason that went up. So she'll be getting longevity as well as the one that already was. Everything's pretty much the same. If you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them. I will say, under expenses for parking tickets, which is $54210, that cost has decreased significantly now that the DPW is using electronic handhelds to do their ticketing. So I don't need to purchase as many paper tickets. It's only for the police department. So I can easily allow you to cut $1,000 from that line.
So that one is $54210?
Yep.
And you said cut $1,000?
Yes.
Any questions? Counsel Tomlin?
Thank you for coming down. And on the top, Personal Services Certification, STIPEN, 51910, is that $1,000 needed? It looks like...
Yes, that's, I am certified through the Mass Collectors and Treasurers Association, so it's a $1,000 stipend. That's in ordinance, now that I have that certification.
And it was expended from last year? Or was that just half of the year, the $269?
Yeah, so this previous year is the first year that I got certified, last August. So this is the first year that that's gone through. And obviously, there was a reclass actually done, because when they initially paid me after I got certified, it didn't go into the right account. So that's why you only see $269 expended. But in reality, by December, $462 was expended.
Okay. 53085, Deputy Collector Services, I mean, there's nothing there, but expended, it looks like a minus $8,152.
Yep, so that's just timing. It's an in-and-out account. We receive payment and I deposit that, and then we pay a bill out of it. So there's, it doesn't need to be funded. It pays for itself.
Pays for itself. Is that when you have to send all notices for, was it late fees or late taxes?
Yep.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Counsel Reagan?
Thank you. Thanks for coming down.
Thanks for coming down and congratulations on getting an extra certification. My, what I'm wondering about is if you're finding there are more people lagging in their tax payments at this time, or if people are staying pretty timely and able to make their payments?
I will say, the previous fiscal year, obviously, we had the issue of getting the third and fourth quarter bills out, and they both went out at once, so definitely did see a lag with that, but that was accentuating circumstances. Other than that, the collection rates have been pretty standard for the past few years.
And do you know what it is right now?
For real estate, it's like 94%.
And that's pretty standard from community to community, would you say?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Council McGivern?
Katie, do you, I believe, share a floating cork with the treasurer?
Yes.
Is that being fully utilized?
We're in the process of hiring that right now.
Okay, so there's a transfer coming in the finance, so the extra money is because the position was vacant for...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Council Sullivan?
Thanks. Item 53060, the banking services.
Yep.
We only used 2,000 halfway through the year, where are we at with that?
Yep, so, that, in that line, the expenses usually come in in January and then July, so that's why you don't see the full amount. The 2005 is actually the payment that happened in July for January through June of 2018 because we get billed semi-annually.
And we expect that to still hit 6,000 this year?
Yep, currently, I'm at 5,300.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just, Tom?
Oh, sorry, Council Murphy, sorry.
So, again, on that banking services case, so, if, say first six months, the 2005 was for July through December?
No, so that, that payment was January through June of 2018.
Last year, okay.
Yep, that got paid in July, so that's why it's in this fiscal year. And then, obviously, this only goes to 12/31/18, but in January, we paid for July to December of this year, and then in March, we get the bill for the lockbox.
Okay. And how much is that?
About 1,300.
Okay, so that's why the second half is much higher than the first half?
Right.
Okay. And just, I mean, I'm pretty sure I get my tax bill from you, but no posted, so how do you send my tax bill? Because I'm not a computer, right?
It's, um...
Well, great extent.
We have a contract with our deputy collector and they print and mail the bills and they pay for it.
Okay. And so that's the deputy collector that's got a minus 8152?
Correct. But like I said, that trust because a receipt hadn't posted to that account yet.
That's the company in Walden or Malden or something?
Uh, yeah.
Somewhere out there, Norton? Somewhere in Ann Hollyoke, I know that, right?
Yeah.
Wilburn?
The lockbox is in the Wilburn.
Well, the lockbox is up there.
Okay, I'm all set.
Council Reagan?
Under advertising the $10,000, is that where you take out the newspaper ad for the people who are late?
Yes, and this year it was 13,000.
Is that cost-effective? I mean, do you find the publication of that list results in a significant uptick in payments other than your regular follow-up process?
Yes, because the, we see a huge increase when the letter goes out saying we're going to advertise. People don't want to be advertised, so they'll come in and pay, but then, once the advertisement actually happens, there's still a drastic amount of people that will come in between that and the actual taking date and pay off the full amount.
So, you recommend that we continue?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking, thanks.
Anyone else?
Just one quick comment, just, and I've heard, she's the official trainer for a lot of the staff that has problems with the computer system in terms of finance, so if I'm correct, I'm gonna give you compliments because I heard that several times as well, that when they have a question, that's who they go to, so thank you for that.
Sure.
Katie, I just wanna follow up on the question that Council Reagan asked, because I do think that there, I think we're finding out that you don't necessarily have to publish in the paper of record in order to publish something, and so, I mean, could the threat of publishing work just the same if we were to publish something to our city's website and that would be free, or?
I believe, and I, I mean, I can go through the state law, obviously, and with the Mass Collectors and Treasurers Association, but it does physically have to be put in a newspaper, and then I have to take that posting and physically post it in two separate locations. So, I post it here in City Hall and then in the annex.
And then the follow-up question would be, I'm assuming that that price for advertising is with the Republican?
Yep.
And I do think that we have another local paper, so it'd be interesting to check in to see, yeah.
Yes, I think the only reason that we've historically gone with the Republican is because they publish more often, and I'm in a strict time window of when I have to do the publication, once I send the letters.
Okay, I see, I see. All right, it'd be great to know some more of those details, though, if it could not have to be physically published.
Sure.
Things are moving to a more digital...
Absolutely, I mean, I would love to be able to do that, believe me, it's a real, it's lengthy and pain.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no more, thank you very much. Next on the agenda is veteran services. Page 40.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, the budget that you have in front of you, the expense side of it was level-funded through the mayor's office, it's not what I asked for, so the numbers down there are the same as what you had last year. The difference you're gonna see this year is an attempt to go from 2.7 FTEs to three. We're looking to hire a full-time investigator and a national service officer.
Any questions for Reagan?
You're looking at me, I guess I'm up.
Well, no, I didn't know, you had the book, I didn't know if you were going.
So, I think you came in earlier in the year about this position, that we matched some money for?
No, earlier in the year, I kept in requesting some matching funds for a grant to digitize historical records.
Okay, so there was no position?
No position.
It was just relative to that?
This is just, yeah, for the, to digitize all our DB214s and military records.
So, just as a technical matter, we already discussed this at our last city council meeting, we accepted the budget prior to this position and some other position coming in, which currently do not exist in the city, and so, we have to clarify the technical legal aspect, we cannot add expenses to the budget. And so, these are coming in as added expenses in addition to the budget we initially received. So, just so you know, we're in the process of getting clarification on that because all the regular positions were present in here. But in terms of supporting an additional full-time person in your department, could you talk to us about activity and statistics that would indicate, that's a big increase in terms of, you know, relative staffing?
What's really happening is 2.7 to three, so it's .3 more, just different positions. What we have in our office are two national accredited service officers who file claims against the Veterans Benefits Administration. We are the only two accredited agents out of the veteran service officers in western Massachusetts. So, what that does, it helps us find alternative sources of income for veterans that are in our community utilizing the Chapter 115 program.
So, are you saying that the national service officer is replacing the deputy commissioner line? It's not an additional position?
Correct.
Okay. But it is a new...
It is a new position.
Position?
Yes.
I think we're gonna bind on that, but I guess we'll get advice from legal on that one.
Sure.
Yeah. But I hear what you're doing, thank you.
What book do you have?
I've got two books.
Is that the first budget book or the second one?
I have both.
Both of them, in both of them, I think.
Yeah, because it's in the first, the first one we got, I have listed a request for the national service officer and investigator, and I have the new budget book that we got Tuesday night.
Right, but we don't have that position in existence in the city.
Right, no, no, okay, I see what you're saying, I thought you said it wasn't in the first budget book, but, okay.
But to continue with some data here, in the calendar year of 2018, we recorded about 1,600 interactions with veterans in the city. Last year, we had 21 claims awarded and adjudicated in favor of veterans totaling about $122,000, and our 12-month projection is about $300,000 that gets paid to the veterans, doesn't come to city council, doesn't go to the general fund, but that's work that we're doing that curbs people from having to utilize the Chapter 115 program. Our clerk, right now, performs duties of veteran service officers every day. She's found homeless veterans in the city, we put them up in hotels, we found housing for them, she administers Chapter 115 as it is.
Council Tomlin?
Yeah, thanks for coming down. How many employees you have right now on duty other than you? Two?
It's 2.7 total, so it's myself, deputy director, and a clerk. The clerk is part-time.
Okay, so where do you get the .7? Is it?
She's 25 hours out of 35.
Okay. And is it gonna, and is it gonna stay that way? Or is it gonna change?
The goal is to go three.
To three, so changing from 25 to a full-time, okay.
Thirty-five hours.
Question I have is on two items, 51500 and 51510, vacation and sick leave buyback. It seems like it's up there and it wasn't utilized last year, very little?
So, the sick leave buyback, for those that are part of the PSA, gets paid back through either short-term or long-term disability. Currently, our deputy director, who's been here for a long time, is part of the clerks' union, and he can buy back up to $5,000 worth of sick leave if he were to leave the city.
And so he has that much available then?
Oh, yeah.
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 And how about the vacation buyback? That full amount needed, the 5,000?
I used it, I used a small amount of that last year, sold back some of my leave, and there's about $3,000 remaining, which will go back into the general fund this year. So, it's just projecting, being conservative, using a worst-case scenario.
Okay. Is there anywhere, and I know you, the position to go from, you know, up to the full-time, is there anywhere on this budget that you seem you could spare some, something, even 100 or 200 dollars, anywhere?
Well, what you didn't see was my original proposal, or maybe you did.
I did, yeah, I saw...
Okay, so I initially asked for...
I saw the one cut, that from the Veterans Benefits Direct, from 50,000.
And also education and training, we have to keep CEUs in order to maintain our credentials within the Office General Counsel, and that's not being funded to what I originally asked for. The other thing that's happened this last year is that we partnered with the Department of Transitional Assistance. We can now apply for SNAP benefits for veterans in the city who come into our office, and half of the labor rate is reimbursed by the SNAP, yeah, program.
Okay. Any other question I had, and I know Veterans Benefits and the reimbursement, there's a lag time, right? I mean, you...
Yeah, it's still about a year, yeah.
Is it 75% or?
It is 75% for most of that money that we expend. If we expend funds for the prevention of homelessness or to get a homeless veteran out of our, out of our, or, you know, housed, that gets reimbursed at 100% by the state.
100%.
Which I think this year, we've had nine instances of that, where we either help the veteran get into a property by paying first-last security, putting them into, we had one individual whose property was condemned, we put him in a hotel for a couple of weeks until we found them permanent housing, we deal with it quite often.
So, is that working out well as far as homeless veterans right now in the past year or two, trying to get people, I mean, it's still a problem and I still see that out there, but...
Well, I'll make a couple of statements. One, if you're a veteran in Hollyoke and you're homeless, there's no reason for it. We have, we have plenty of resources available. We're part of the Western Mass Coalition to End Veteran Homelessness, we meet with the Continuum of Care, we have a by-name list of all the veterans in western Massachusetts, and we actually have more resources than we have homeless veterans right now, according to that, so we're active, we get a lot of support from the state and the surrounding communities, so, yeah.
Yeah, appreciate it, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Council Reagan?
I just have to ask, I understood what you said about credentials relative to national service officer, but it's a huge leap from 37.3 to 49.5.
Well, I'll put that in perspective for you. There's only two of us in western Mass that can do this. We can file a claim directly to the VA. I have access to the VA system, I can log in and look at, as a claim goes through its process, where it is. Your investigators in surrounding communities make $49,000 who don't have that credential.
So, how many people are we investigating a year?
So, the investigator investigates anyone and everyone who is part of the Chapter 115 program, which includes looking at bank statements, requesting social security award letters, checking with other departments if they owe money in the city, and from that, we've, you know, there's been a handful of people who've been removed from our program because of fraud.
Yeah, but how many people are we touching between you and the deputy per year?
Well, Chapter 115 alone, we have, we float between 60 and 80 families, and like I said, some last year, we interacted with over 1,600, we had recorded 1,600 interactions, which could be around 500, 600 people throughout the year.
And how does that compare to the prior year?
We've gone up quite a bit. I don't have numbers.
Yeah, because, and I mean, I'm not trying to pick on you, because I respect your work greatly and I think you're doing a very good job, but we have, we're faced with a really tough budget this year. It's gonna be, it's gonna be difficult, but so I'm trying to understand it, but I just wanna be open about the concerns.
Sure, and I'll be open as well. I mean, our, our office uses technology to the fullest extent. I sit here with this fancy iPad, we do intakes with this, you know, we go out to the community, we go to people's homes. I haven't bought a case of paper since I've gotten here.
Yay.
Two years, right? So, we're pretty active in trying to reduce the waste in our expenditures. I am, believe it or not, I'm pretty conservative when it comes to finances and I don't wanna be spending money I don't have to, but I also know that we're doing a heck of a lot more work than you've ever seen out of that office ever, and I'll say that, and I'll back it up.
Okay. And could you just share with us, I know there's the year lag and we've had a lot of discussions about that reimbursement process within the office from the state. Do you know what the collection rate is? I mean, we understand the lag.
Collection rate is slightly over 75%, you'll see that on your cherry sheet.
And what would be standard throughout?
75 is even, so, yeah, so what happens is when we expend funds in, from the Chapter 115 program, we request a reimbursement through the state, they either deny it or approve it. We have had no denial since we've been here.
Okay, that was kind of what I was getting at. We're, we're tight in our system, so we're not losing it because we're not seeking it. It's only dependent on the program reimbursement itself.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Council Sullivan?
Yeah, thanks. Jesus, we're going from a deputy commissioner to a national service officer, they're gonna make 12 grand more a year. The clerk's going from part-time to a full-time investigator making 35,000 a year. Do we really think with these pay increases that they're gonna be leaving this year and we need to budget 5,000 just in case they do for...
No, I don't think any of them are gonna be leaving.
So, would it be safe to say if we don't think they're gonna leave, that we could cut probably 2,500 from the vacation buyback and eliminate the sick leave buyback? I mean, we really anticipate these people staying, that's a worst-case scenario if they left.
You wouldn't hurt my feelings if you did that.
Okay, thanks. We got something out of you.
There you go.
I thought I asked that, but you didn't wanna do it.
You didn't ask it the right way.
I tried, I tried.
You asked it the right way?
I got beat, I got beat up twice.
Now you ask it, Peter.
Council Bartley?
Yeah, Jesus, first of all, thank...
Council Bartley?
Oh, I'm fine.
Start with a B.
Oh, okay. I got you.
I can, I can go next, but that's okay. Just on the, on the other side of the ledger, because we don't hear about the revenue side, so what, are you renting the facility at all? Are you, are you allowed people to go into the Medal of Honor Room and look at that? Or what's, and then the basement and, you know, it's a pretty big building that doesn't have a lot of staff in it, and so...
Yeah, so you're talking about the War Memorial Commish, uh, building? Yeah, so you're talking about the War Memorial Commission, building, correct?
I am.
Yes, I have zero control over that building, zero, you have a War Memorial Commission who controls that building, I understand the city funds it, but the one thing that is upcoming is, we talked into one of our partners into discussing renting one of the rooms on the second floor, so they're a little bit more open about making rental arrangements with folks, which I'm sure will come to you guys, it's just through the Solicitor Office now, and then it'll come to you guys if it does get approved. So there are efforts on my end, again, not my building, don't own it, just live there, but I do talk to a lot of entities to try to come in and spend some money in the city, and to, if that could be a veteran hub, I would totally love that. I would love to see the VA in there, I would love to see homeless case managers in there, I would love to see psychologists in there, I mean, absolutely, I would love to get people in there, but it's not my lane.
Okay, it's not your lane, so it's the War Memorial Commission?
Yes, sir.
The Commissioners, all right, and what would you suggest that we do to reach out to them, if it's, I mean, I don't, I mean, it's just a lovely building, and you would, I'd like to see it used a little more, and I'm not saying we have to, we're running a business out of there, I'm not implying that, but I'm just I mean, I'm just thinking in terms of the hall itself, the Medal of Honor Room, and then, I mean, there, this seems like there could be a little more use.
Yeah, and I'm in agreement with you, I think there could be a lot more use, this new individual who may come into our building has a lot of connections within the VA Healthcare Administration, they hold mental health summits for them, and through that, we've had two or three people interested to come in and rent the hall, but there's been some more activity as far as local events happening at the hall as well, but I think Chris Sims would be the individual who could answer that best.
And Chris is the?
He's the Chair of the War Memorial.
He's the Chair, okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, all right, Chris MC the events last Monday as well, so.
Yes.
All right, Veterans Day services, will they be held on Veterans Day this year?
So, there's another one, the United Veterans of Holyoke is the group that is in charge of setting up patriotic events. So they're the ones who decide when we're gonna have Veterans Day and Memorial Day, our office supports them. If they were to go away, then we would take up that responsibility, but currently, it's them, I don't think they've started planning Veterans Day yet.
Okay, so it's nice to have Memorial Day services on Memorial Day, so, but we didn't have any, we didn't have the usual kind of parade and all that, so they, so this, the United Veterans of Holyoke organize all that?
That's correct, they've been doing it for years, it's just, I think Veteran Service has been the face that kind of deals with whatever happens with it. But the reality is that they plan it, I was there for the decision-making process for Memorial Day, and the parade that was discussed, the fact is, is that walking down High Street, there was probably like four people, so you had more people in the parade than actually attending the parade, and the community engagement was low. We still held the ceremony because that's key to the day, and it's important, but the resources it takes to set up in Veterans Park and doing all that was, you know, didn't think was the best decision at the time.
Okay, that helps, thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
You have his time, right?
Yeah, I got you.
So, first of all, thank you for your efforts, I mean, I've seen them firsthand, and they are tremendous, and I want to commend you for that. Just want to make sure, and I'm having a hard time getting a full grasp of, so, the Deputy Commissioner in this budget would become the National Service Officer, if I'm reading that correctly?
I believe he would have to apply for it, yes, and be selected.
Okay, so if the Deputy Commissioner applied and did not get selected, would that Deputy Commissioner then be unemployed?
Maybe an issue, I don't know, yeah.
And, am I also assuming that the head clerk would have to apply to be an investigator?
Would have to apply, but that's a different process, because it's a union position, that would be an internal posting.
So, I mean, I would, just upfront, I mean, I would have concerns that creating a position where I have someone, I'm assuming he's doing a good job based on what I've seen, but obviously, you may have, but that that person would not, if we were going to create a position to, and I think you indicated he had the status, that his protection, where his job protection would be eliminated by opening up this position and eliminating his other, that is a.
Well, I would say is that, again, there's only two in Western Mass that have the credentials.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean somebody from not Western Mass could come and apply, I would assume.
We're not paying enough for someone from out of Western Mass to come here.
Okay, and I heard you say that Counselor Sullivan, vacation and sick leave, potentially, we could buy some of that back, and then my other question is, the Veterans Benefits Direct?
Yep.
And I know you requested four hundred, just two years ago, we spent three hundred and fifty, and you're only getting three fifty, and you had halfway through, you were already past the three fifty. So two questions, number one, is it realistic that three hundred and fifty is going to take care of the vet needs that you have to provide, and number two, at this stage, are we getting, are you having to service more or less vets?
So, is that enough? No. The reimbursement rate for indigent veterans that need assistance with paying for funeral arrangements has gone up from two thousand to four thousand. This year, we had nine deaths that we helped pay for. And we hover within the sixty to eighty client portfolio, the people come in, whether they're of working age, who need assistance, trying to find a job, going through that process, and they're on for a couple of weeks. There's not, that number, I think there should be more, I just don't think that the veteran saturation in Holyoke is what it used to be. And maybe some people don't know about us, but we're definitely trying to get out in the community, so that people know these services are available.
So those vets that are in between jobs, or are trying to find the job, you're trying to provide them, or you are providing them with some benefits to hold them over until?
It's means-tested, and there's a formula, they get very limited help, they're required to be doing job searches and participate in Mass Hire's Veterans Training Program, amongst other programs, those who come and don't get tons of money from us, that's for sure, but we do assist.
Okay, thank you.
No further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming down. Next is the Personnel Department. Page nine, good evening.
Bye. Good evening.
Turn it over to you, if you have anything you want to share, or if you just want to get into the numbers up to you.
The only number that I would like to begin with, because it's, for me at the current time, the most important, as you'll see.
Is your mic on? I think your mic needs to go on, a green light.
Got it.
Thank you.
So, the line that I would like to focus on is that I did request for an additional personnel in my department, I know that that oftentimes has been requested in previous years, it was requested last year, and the mayor did his cut to that line before I was able to come and attest to it, but I think most of you guys were in the budget hearing last year when I spoke, and I still attest to it, I think, at that time, I was only here a couple of weeks, and I was able to notice, and, you know, the four weeks that I was there, that the department obviously is significantly understaffed, some of you, and you and I have had discussions about that, and I know that some of you will agree, for those that don't, definitely welcome invitation to visit the department and sit down and have discussions. But I think that the big reason this year that I've noticed after being here for a year and two months is if I am being out in the field and being active, if I'm visiting the fire department, or if I'm visiting Council on Aging, my department now becomes a one-man show, and by man, I mean woman, I have my assistant here, Naomi. So she kind of holds down the office in my absence, and at times, that can be, not at times, actually, probably often, very burdensome. Not only for her, but if department heads are seeking, you know, any of my help or guidance, and I'm not there, then that creates a conflict, it pushes things off. Some of you may have even tried to call my office, and I wasn't there to take your call, Counselor McGee, you and I have played phone tags many times. So, having that additional support in the office is critical, we have close to five hundred city employees, nine hundred and fifty retirees, you know, during the open enrollment season, you know, we sent out the open enrollment letters to all active employees, as well as retirees, as we should, but if the retirees don't get back to us, either they go without insurance, or we have to chase them down to make sure that they have their coverage. So with that, Naomi and I had to place close to two hundred phone calls, and just estimating that one phone call with a retiree takes about fifteen minutes, if you do the math, that's about fifty hours worth of telephone time, just calling retirees, so that's over a week of work. And that was just the most recent thing, last year wasn't as challenging because we remained with the same carrier, obviously, you guys know that we switched this year, so that was a significant challenge for both just myself and my assistant. So, with that, I am requesting additional staff. You know, certainly could have requested two or three, because that's, there's certainly a lot of work, but baby steps, so I'm only requesting one. Outside of that, I don't think there are any other major changes, I'm sure you guys will, oh, actually, the other thing is line item five-three-zero-one-zero, which is the training, so last year, when I came on board, I think, even during my interview process, we talked a lot about, you know, what are some of the things that I would like to accomplish within the department, and many of which, some of that costs dollars, such as training. And I think Counselor Sullivan had asked if any of that training could be conducted by myself, you know, at a lesser expense, which, as I've already attested, no, it cannot, I'm already very, you know, stretched thin significantly, I partner with the Law Department on a lot of the employee relations things that we have going on in the city, to minimize any exposure that we may see. Last year, I also talked to, just my couple of weeks being here, a lot of the compliance issues that I found, which, again, could be extremely costly to the city, so just having an additional support for thirty-six thousand dollars, I would hope can allow the Personnel Department to focus on the things that essentially down the line can cost us a hundred thousand dollars, or two hundred thousand dollars, whatever the case may be. So, again, with that is training, and Counselor Murphy, you have talked about that. Something as basic as munish training, I've gotten feedback that a lot of employees would like munish training, getting munish in here to train us is three thousand, four thousand dollar expense, we haven't done that yet, because I haven't felt comfortable just yet to spend that money, and thankfully, to what Counselor Murphy spoke to earlier, about Katie Jakowski being a significant help and a resource in that area, she is, and she's always willing to take some time out of her day, and out of her department, to sit with an employee, and kind of go over some of the ins and outs of munish, as she did with me when I first came on board. But, then there are other training softwares and platforms in the industry that would allow us to have webinars, so, when it came on, we've had some in-person trainings, we had a department head training, professional development, it was a two-day course here on site. We have a cybersecurity training coming up, which is a four-session, we had to break it up into four sessions in order to fit as many employees as we can, and we're still not going to tackle citywide, but obviously, long-term, that will be the goal. And, you know, even just managerial training, you know, how to be a good manager, customer service training, professionalism, so there's countless trainings that, you know, we can add on to the list, and all of those are going to cost funds. I don't think that the fourteen thousand dollars is going to cover all of that, but again, we can only accomplish so much within one fiscal year, so I'm just hopeful that you guys continue to grant that, so that we can continue investing into our employees. Outside of those two line items, everything else pretty much remains consistent. I did not plan for a buyback for my assistant, she's been with the city for about twenty-two years, so she does have a pretty hefty bank in the event that she were to leave, but I, I'm hopeful that you don't have any plans on that, so. I did not allocate funds there, so had I, and you guys, you know, would request to cut it, that would be a discussion, but I did not even entertain that, because I'm hopeful that she's gonna remain under expenses, you know, repair and maintenance for three hundred dollars. I was gonna put more, I don't know if you guys are aware, but I am gonna be moving office locations, so right now, I share space with the Treasurers and the Tax Collector. So once we move, there may be a need to figure out different equipment, you guys were talking about copiers earlier, right now, the Personnel Department shares the copier with the Treasurer. So we don't have a lot of our own supplies, once we move, we may need that, so that three hundred dollars really isn't enough. But I was just trying to be a little bit more frugal with the budget before we brought it in front of you guys.
Where are you moving to?
The Law Department, so, I think, it wasn't last year, maybe twenty-seventeen, I don't know exactly when it occurred, but there was a flood in half of the area where the Law Department is located, so for quite some time, that was under construction or renovation, and where I am currently located, there's, it's not necessarily the most comfortable place for employees to come visit the HR Department. It's an open space, I don't have the ability to have a private conversation with anyone, so we have to go down the hall to a separate office that is all the way down the basement level floor, so for quite some time, the mayor and I have been discussing options of where we can be located that would be the most confidential space for employees or anyone to visit, and we partnered with DPW to renovate the other half of the Law Department, and that's where Personnel will be located.
Counselor Reagan?
Thanks, thanks for coming down, I think I recall when you first arrived, you shared with us that the Personnel files were in quite bad shape, and that we were out of compliance with all the legal separations of medical and standard files and all of that. I was just wondering how that circumstance stands, and I know you haven't been here too long, you know, just over a year, but I'm wondering if you've been able to bring some order to that, because that's definitely a legal exposure.
Yeah, there's many, and I will say, just to speak to the files of the employee files and the benefits, that's under control to the best of my knowledge, you know, previously, before coming here, I've had the opportunity to do internal audits, and, you know, with my files and my previous employment and things of that nature, but again, just the way we're currently staffed, it's close to impossible to separate that time and actually accomplish, you know, internal audits or tasks that I would really like to get to.
Right, but you at least have the two files for each person, and everything's not all merged, all of that.
Correct, and that actually, I think, was already, had already begun before I came on board, but I'm pretty confident that those files are the way that they need to be, those specific files.
And that's just one that we happen to become aware of, I mean, I'm sure there's more.
Mm-hmm.
But, so it's progress, in any event, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Thomas?
Yes, thanks for coming down and sharing your needs with us, on Professional Services Employee Assistance Program, is that something that's contracted out?
It is.
That's a set cost?
Yes, yep, and I think the yearly cost has increased from previous years, but it has remained for the eighteen thousand.
Do you have a certain agency that deals with that, is that somebody locally, or?
Yes, we, it is someone locally, it's here in Holyoke, I forget the name off the top of my head, do you? Well, it's, it is the EAP, but there's, they do have a facility name, yeah.
Okay, so how does that work, actually, if a person needs assistance, they come to you, and recommended to the?
Depending on the employee, whether they feel comfortable enough to go to their department head first, or come directly to me, which, it can go either way. Ultimately, always ends up going through me, and then we would either make a referral for that employee to visit them and use their services, I think it's about six sessions that are free of charge, and after that. I think it's about six sessions that are free of charge, and after that, and that was just a ballpark number, the six. And then after that, the program will refer them to some type of, another office that, then they would, you know, be free to use their insurance or anything of that nature.
And that's any employee in the city? It could be school department, any employee at all? Can you utilize that program?
You know, that's actually a good question in terms of the school department. I'm not sure.
Yes?
Okay, my assistant here says yes. I do know that outside of the school department, everyone else citywide has access to the EAP.
Okay, appreciate that.
Counselor Murphy?
So just staying on that EAP, just, so is that a, an employee that has some psychological health issues or?
It could be anything. So their services provide counseling for family counseling, psychological issues, anger management. It could be stress-induced, it could be workplace-related. We even have the, or I have the ability to refer someone, whether they would like to go or not. Now, I can't force them to go, but I can certainly refer them myself and say, listen, I think this is something that will benefit you. And so, there are employees that take use of it. I wish sometimes that maybe more employees would take use of it, but it's beneficial for those that do. And at any given point, you know, today, employee one will not use it, but maybe tomorrow they will. So I think it's something that needs to be, certainly remains.
So obviously, there's different ways, but a department head that thought an employee had some issues that needed to be addressed, would they typically go to you and ask you to address them, or would they?
Correct. So I'll give you a scenario in terms of, in terms of a department head. So, one thing that I've urged department heads to do is consult with me if they're finding that there are any performance issues with an employee. And there has, there has been quite a few. Now, some, and that's why I said it's important for us to have managerial trainings or professionalism or, you know, leadership trainings, because some managers will, not just, it's not, it's not just here in the city, but some managers will just think, listen, this employee isn't performing well, they have to go. But sometimes, that's not what it is. Sometimes, there's something going on. Sometimes, it's, you know, it could be that they're just not understanding the work, but it could be because they're going through something personal at home. So that's where the EAP would come in and we can say, listen, I think it'd be good for you to go visit the, you know, this office and just have the opportunity to speak with someone. And we've had people come back and say, thank you for referring me, this was great. And I know that the EAP does have year-to-year employees that return to use their services. So it is beneficial. Yeah.
So if the employee does not want to go, and if, I'm assuming the problem was acute enough that the director or manager recognized that it's impacting not only the employee, but the function of the office, at that point, is there a way that it can be mandated or not?
It can't be mandated. You can't, you can't force them.
So at that point, then, the only thing would be to discipline the?
Correct.
Okay. And just one other thought, and I agree with training, I certainly agree with the munish training, because I heard that several times when I first started, that that's a deficiency that we have here that could improve our effectiveness. My other thought, having worked at Hoyer Community College and knowing that Hoyer Community College has moved into a few places that now they, where they don't pay taxes, where we used to get taxes, and they are, I would strongly encourage you to reach out to them and suggest that as a community service to the city, that they should be willing to offer management and leadership courses, either in City Hall or at the college, where we would not end up having to pay a substantial amount or any amount for that matter. And I would encourage you to reach out to them and see if that's possible, because I would hope they would think that makes sense with all the things that the city is doing for them. They can also return that, so.
Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thanks. Hector, regarding the new position for the administrative clerk, that's, it's just a heck of a jump in one year, and I understand your need. Would a part-time clerk as a halfway step? I know that'll afford you some relief if you're out of the office part-time and help us. We, I mean, we're facing tremendous issues this year.
A part-time clerk, I can't say that it would not be a help, but when we say, you know, adding this position is a big chunk in a year, it hasn't been a year. It's been several years, many years, that the department has been understaffed, and that's set us back, based off my observations of how the department should be, in terms of things such as compliance and such, where there's a significant need for more than just one request for an employee. So, I can't say that a part-time person is not going to help, but I'm going to say that not having this full-time person is just going to continue leading us down a road that we wouldn't want to go down.
Okay. And is there money coming back into the general fund this year from the training line? Have we expended the full $10,000 or?
We actually have not. So that's what I actually told you guys last year as well, if you recall. I would rather have the funds, because I am someone that seeks alternative, you know, options. I'd rather have the funds there than not have them at all. So there are going to be funds in the, from the training line that are going to go back into the general fund.
Where are we at right now, do you know?
Prob, in terms of what's going to go back into the general fund, probably a little under $5,000.
That's it.
Anyone else? Do you work with other cities with regards to their personnel, as to what they have?
I do. I've actually had the Director of Pittsfield come down and sit with me last year, just to have a quick overview, allow him to have the opportunity to just give me some feedback in terms of realistically, the way that we're set up. And the, the response was not anything that I wasn't already expecting from him to say, which is that it's ridiculous, the situation that we're in.
So...
And I've also partnered with the, she hasn't visited the office, but the Director from Chickaby, who now works in Amherst, has been a good mentor and someone that I partner with.
How many staff do they have in Chickaby or Palmer or wherever? Do they just have two? Do they have three? What do they have in their Personnel Departments, do you know?
Well, I did send something out to a couple of the Directors here in Massachusetts. On average, it's three.
On average?
On average, it's three. The industry standard, I mean, it doesn't, quite honestly, it doesn't matter what the industry standard is if we can't afford it, right? But the industry standard is one HR professional per 100 employees. So that would bring, you know, on the city end, close to five staff members. Obviously, we're at two, so having a third person would certainly help. But a lot of the other communities surrounding towns have certainly more than two.
Okay. And we hear other departments have a thing called the floating clerk.
Correct.
Have you guys looked into using the floating clerk from other areas, or is there a conflict because your personnel?
There's a conflict, yeah. So I can't have a union employee in my department, they have to be a confidential employee. I've even considered the line item for seasonal. I am 1,000% not interested in seasonal or temporary help, just because of the type of information that these, that person would be exposed to. So if you guys were to grant me to have a third person, you guys can completely take out that temporary and seasonal help, because we wouldn't need it.
That was going to be my question. Last year, you were very generous in offering up areas to cut. So before you left, I was going to say, temporary seasonal, if things went your way, that could just be wiped out, because it'd become moot.
I mean, it...
I mean, you still would want it, I mean.
Well, yes and no, because the purse, where those funds were going historically were for mandated reports that need to be completed, which I've never seen in my entire career. So that was something new to me. Halfway through that process, it ended up just being the responsibility of myself, and I've had partnership with our auditor, Tanya, just to, we basically self-taught ourselves how to get this report in, and we've partnered with the outside auditors in terms of what was previously provided to you. So even a project like that, that happens every other year, is extremely burdensome and time-consuming. But I really would not want a temporary person to have access to medical information, which is some of what those reports consist of, social security numbers, date of births. And that's what was happening the last several years, and that's not something that I would recommend.
Anything further? There's nothing further? Thank you very much for coming down.
You're welcome.
Next is Council on Aging. So I'll turn it over to you if there's anything you want to share, any changes, anything recommended or recommending. Last year was my fault, we missed it on the schedule to call you in, so we made absolutely sure we didn't miss you this year. I do apologize.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll turn it over to you.
The fact of the matter is, for the, this was the fifth year I've done the budget for the Council on Aging. I have more or less level-funded it by making, making appropriate cuts and creating more efficiencies and streamlining things. I've been able to keep it more or less level-funded while incorporating three years' worth of union-mandated increases. So there's not really a lot that's significantly different. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Any questions?
I'm just, I'm going to give her a chance to say what she said to me when we met. And it was a prayer that we wouldn't cut the energy, gas, and electric, because the, as you noticed already, she's 21 before we got into the winter. And I think, you know, when we had Council on Aging, we directed three new potential commissioners for a Council on Aging here last night that we were talking about. So you want to just explain that, I mean, I know you've had energy issues there and concerns, so.
I think one of the things that happens is people look at the new facility and they think, how can it possibly be that much to heat and cool? We face a number of challenges there. One is a geothermal system that doesn't really work as was hoped. It was all new-fangled and fancy, and it's really not providing us any cost savings in the running of the daily operation. You can see in 2018 even, the total that was expended was $49,000. As I said to Counselor Murphy, every year, I optimistically underfund, hoping that we will have a cooler summer and a warmer winter, and then I end up shifting things around to cover what I fall short on. But it's one of the line items that I've seen several times, just get, you know, $3,000 or $4,000 gets lopped off, and what I want you to know is I'm already actually underfunding that.
What about water and sewer? You're comfortable there with all the?
I am comfortable with all of my numbers. Each year, I've been really taking a look at what we're spending and making sure that I'm budgeting appropriately.
Counselor Leece?
I want to clarify that you're making reference to the rate increase.
No, I'm just making sure other expenses, if that's, knowing that the energy, you know, the system's not working as promised, are there other areas of concern that you have other than just energy? So I just went down to the next one, water and sewer.
Oh, no, I'm good with what I have proposed.
All right. Any, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you for coming down. And I was just wondering on that geothermal system, because it is a relatively new building, was there any sort of warranty or any way to go back to that, either the builder or the installer, or I don't even understand totally how it works, but it was supposed to be the latest, greatest thing. So have you circled back to them and had them come out and look at it? I mean, is it a matter of function or just a matter that it didn't achieve the same efficiencies that were anticipated?
All of it.
But I mean, is it working as it's supposed to? I mean, is it working, period?
It is working.
Or is it just a failed system?
It is not a failed system. It is working. One of the things that recently came up in conversation was the school department asked me how our system was working, because they were considering geothermal for the new buildings, and I said, do not get geothermal. And one of the engineers who was on the advising committee for that said that that was also her recommendation, because geothermal systems work best in very hot climates or very cold climates. They don't work well in New England. And I'm not sure that people really knew that even seven years ago, when, eight years ago, when that building was being built. I think there was, there was a lot more optimism for how it would function here.
Okay.
But yes, I have consulted with, I'm in regular contact with the architect who helps try to solve some of these issues, because our senior center is one of the nicest senior centers in the state, and it is, we have lots of other communities coming to look at it. It's a show, it's a showpiece for the architect, really. And so he's very happy to help us try to navigate some of these problems.
Okay. And on a completely different matter, I'm sure you're aware that we have some really hot topics going on in the city?
Yes.
And I would just like your personal assurance that there will be equal time given to all points of view relative to these matters at the center.
Absolutely. And it's part of our written political policy that you can see on our page on the city's website.
Thank you.
Yeah. They actually, yeah, I had heard some things that came up on Tuesday night, and it was, a reference was made to apparently the group that is not in favor of the schools being built, that they had been told, no, they could not use the senior center. And I can assure you that I never would have done that, because that would be illegal. And in fact, I did have a conversation with one person, and I said, give me a call back when you know when you would like to come in. So I'm not sure how that could have been misconstrued.
I'm not aware of a particular group, but I am aware, and we even addressed it in these council chambers, relative to the CPA process?
Yes.
And the equal time relative to that. This is much more intense than that was. And the call that I received was that someone, and I don't even remember who it is at this time, I'm more focused on the issue than the who?
Sure.
Had called, and they weren't given an outright denial. They were just simply told everything was booked up for the next 30 days, by which time the decisions that needed to be made would be passed. So that's why I'm asking for your assurance relative to equal time. I understand rules, I understand policies, but then there's also the implementation of them, which is why I was requesting your personal assurance, because I think it's just the fair application of these rules and policies that make the difference in the transparency in the city. So that's where I'm coming from on it.
Sure.
Thank you.
I do think that some of the information was misconstrued, because I was the person who had the conversation. It was on May 14th, and I did state that the bill, that we were booked for the month of May, it's our busiest time, we have an event or two every week during the month of May, and it's a question of staffing. But I did say that anytime after June 1st, we, June is actually a very slow month for us. So I was very clear, and it wasn't 30 days, which would put it past the issue.
Okay.
I'll defer.
Counselor Thomas?
No. You go.
Thanks, La, for coming down, and thanks for the conversation you've had at the senior center, involving a lot of different things in your department. On the page with the vacation buyback and six-leave buyback, you have nothing requested. You expect nobody to leave, or if somebody did leave, what would happen? You'd have to find it somewhere else?
Generally, what happens is if they're leaving, you can find that money in their salary line and transfer it to, that's...
To that?
But I'm also not expecting anybody to leave.
That's good to hear. And thank you for the work you're doing, and not only on a daily basis during the week, but all the events that you put together, you know, whether it's a parade or CPA or schools. I think people don't realize the extra work and the staffing that comes into that, that you actually do in the community, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just to, one, to Counselor Bacon's point, and I, again, I'm not a lawyer, but having talked to election division people, it is my understanding that no municipal building, municipal property can be used pro work on on the question. So just, I could be wrong, but that's what they told me. So facilities, municipal facilities could not be used pro work on on that facility, even in information... So facilities, municipal facilities could not be used pro work on on that facility, even in an information session. But once this question has been determined that we sent out, the other thing is, I think we talked about drivers. And you're concerned that at some point you might be looking to expand from two drivers to three drivers.
Right. Currently, we have two full-time drivers and then part-time hours on Wednesday and Friday. I did not include it in, in the budget for this year. I think we'll be looking at that for next year.
So there are people that are looking for that service, but having a difficult time getting it based on where we are right now.
We are managing it now. We made the adjustment to add the part-time driver three or four years ago. I actually fund that out of a state grant that I receive. But the demand, as you know, is only going to grow, and so I'm just anticipating that.
Anyone? There's no further questions? Thank you very much for coming down.
Thank you.
Next is the Building Department. Good evening. Twenty-two and twenty-three. We'll turn it over to you.
I think you told me to start, and I didn't hear it. So there's a few changes this year that we're looking to do that I'll point out. And one is the creation of a new position. We've already started that conversation at the Finance Committee. And I know you recently got an MOA. And maybe or maybe not, you got a job description, but it's for a senior-level advisory position for our wiring inspector. So it's a chief inspector of wires. And that's in this as sixty-five thousand. So we're projecting probably to hire around sixty if we are lucky enough to find anyone that fits the bill. That's been historically very difficult to fill. I think the average time we keep anybody is a year and a half. And then we have our interim per diem inspector fill in from anywhere between nine months to over a year. So with this change, we're hoping that by making it a more advanced level position, there's other folks out there that are in the category of trying to get out of the field to requiring a master's license as opposed to a journeyman. And frankly, even at that salary, that's what the average everyday electrical inspector makes surrounding communities and communities like Hoyoke. So what you see is a full-time position, and then it should have been a point-two-five after that, says point-three. And that's the current wiring inspector position, which is vacant. And it's only in there so that we can reevaluate this in about nine months. If all goes well and we hire the supervisor, we'll have time for them to get settled in and be part of the conversation about what our workload is and where we are for a need to fill a second position. Now, those combined numbers, if we went to the full sixty-five thousand plus the thirteen, is about what we take in in electrical permit fees every year. So it wouldn't even supersede that individual, I guess, debt versus the income. So moving on, just a couple of things. The, I guess, a reminder, the local inspectors with the asterisk there is because that's mostly funded by block grant money, so it's two full-time positions. But there's, there's extra money in there because block grant is restricted, and so we like the flexibility. That changes every year. I think, you know, we're projected to be about sixty-two, so a little bit under for this year. Down further. Some of these things will be reduced, like a clothing allowance if we hire a full-time chief inspector of wires because they wouldn't get, as a professional position, any clothing allowance. So one, a part of that would be reduced. And I always feel like I have to point out telephone use charges is something for iPads, actually. We don't all have telephones, so that's data for our devices in the field. And there's probably not too much else. Like every year, I think I'd like to point out, you know, looking at all these numbers, our full budget, if you take out the money for demolition, which I don't think is part of our budget really, in terms of, you know, that's a variable depending on what kind of work we have to do, but it's not a cost to run the department. It's a, it's a cost to resolve problems in the city. We're about four-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars is the cost as of the first of this month. So we still have a month to go. We've already taken in exactly four-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-seven-hundred. And so, and this is a busy month, we're probably going to approach five-hundred-thousand dollars this year, which means we're putting essentially seventy-five thousand dollars into the general fund after all things considered in running the department. Next year, I'm feeling a little more optimistic than any others because of the things we have coming in the pipeline. We know about some projects that are major within two years ahead of time. And I think we're going to easily go over the five-hundred-thousand-dollar mark for a collection of fees. So that's all I have.
Any questions? Counselor Bacon?
So, Mr. President, I do want to correct the comment I made earlier. The position that wasn't in the budget in the original was this one, not the other one. There were the two that came into us together. And I wrote my note on the wrong page in that regard. So you may already know this because, well, you have a connection to the City Council, but we're waiting for legal to get back to us because the position doesn't technically exist, and we had the budget before us already. So we're getting advice on that. So it's something that may end up having to be addressed later on. But my question relative to the one-plus that you're recommending is just around, in the previous model, and I know you've been pinch hitting because of the staffing issue. What has been the call for inspections in your department, say, in the last year for the type of work that we're talking about? Like, if you can quantify.
For the specific?
And wire inspector. I mean, I don't know if it's like one thing that they do, if it's ten things that they do. But I'm just trying to get a handle on, was it this busy last year, and it's going to be twenty-five percent busier next year? What's the trend? That's what I'm trying to understand.
I'd like to say I have all the electrical permits memorized, but I don't in terms of numbers, yeah.
In general?
It's, I tend to pay more attention to the building permits. But the electrical permits, everything's gone up over the years, like in some of the reports I've brought to you guys, like ten percent every year, ten percent, ten percent. And so the number of permits have gone up. There hasn't been a year that it's gone down, at least since I've been here. And that's not the significant increase, but it's an increase in amount of work, so the square footage.
The size.
And the complexity. So, you know, our electrical inspectors seeing a lot more solar. And you know where it is. You've permitted it through the City Council. And that's something that didn't exist twenty-five years ago, or if it did, it was very minimal. So we have that. We have like the data center kind of stuff. There's a lot of technology that's requiring a higher level of expertise. It's not just wiring in a home. And, you know, the, the electrical inspector also covers, and it's probably a little-known fact, all of the state facilities in Hoyoke. That hasn't always been the case. But they normally in the state level have a building, they have a building inspector staff across the state. I don't know how many there are. There might be twenty, and they have regions. There's a plumbing inspector in the state, so like even the HCC culinary building, which is leased at a state. All the state inspected that except for the plumbing, I'm sorry, the electrical inspector had to do the inspections there. So the soldiers home in HCC, that giant campus, that's our electrical inspector. The building inspectors don't do it, the plumbing inspector doesn't do it in Hoyoke, just him.
So, and the state reimburses your department as they would a contractor in that case?
No, they just pay the fees like anyone else would. So they pay fees to us. And I want to actually look at that a little closer and see if we can find a way to draw in more money off of those particular instances without taking it on the everyday use. I don't know if there's a creative way to say that.
So, okay. Thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. On the proposed new position here, just a reminder to everyone that, you know, anytime a new position is created through a collective bargaining negotiation between the mayor designee and the, and a collective bargaining unit, we must receive a, just like anytime there's a new collective bargaining agreement, a copy of the, the MOU or, or MOA, whichever, or the full contract itself. We did receive that contract at our last meeting last Tuesday, and we did refer that to the Committee on Finance, which is the appropriate route, although in hindsight, I wish we'd referred it here, and we could perhaps have taken care of it this evening. Damien also requested to see if he could get this position going. The Finance Committee did meet on this once already. We are making sure, at that time, we did not have the agreement between the collective bargaining unit with us, but now we do. This is not unprecedented, the arguments, the funding is part of anytime when you create a new position. Funding alone doesn't create the new position. If it's a, again, in this case, you know, part of a collective bargaining unit, then that's one way to do it. If it's professionals such as the personnel director, what he's proposing, I believe a lot of departments are going to tell us we really need to do it hand-in-hand or simultaneously with the new ordinance. And sometimes it's funding just denotes a position that's on the books but hasn't been funded in previous years. But I think the, the argument here makes some sense, knowing that we have not been able to fill our inspecting positions at the level that they're at. And we've been using retired people in other communities, inspectors, in transferring money around. Where I think it makes a lot more sense that we would find someone that we could get on board and be, be part of our, our department itself.
Anyone further? Counselor Bartley?
So, Damien, thank you for being here. You know, Damien, I don't, I don't know if it's something with the budget book or what, but when I look at FY nineteen, what was voted on by City Council, so I see a different number in the FY nineteen budget for your salary, for the assistant building commissioner's salary, for, for several light items. And I don't know why that is, because everybody else is, every other department is exactly the same. So FY nineteen, your salary was voted on by City Council, it's seventy-six-two-thirty-seven. But when I go to the budget book, it says seventy-eight-oh-nine-oh. When I look at the next line down for the assistant commissioner, it says fifty-eight-eight-seven-seven. When I go to the budget book, it says fifty-nine-four-six-six. I'm just wondering, do you have any inkling as to why, what the numbers are, and then why that happened?
Sure. I can't speak to individual pennies here, you know, maybe the auditor, but the, there's been a lot of issues with getting cuts on the union positions. And so these are cost-of-living adjustments that were erroneously cut by the council and then readjusted with the, you know, they were, they were made correct, made whole. And then, of course, we've missed entire years by not being whole. So what you're looking at is back-to-back, like a one percent and one and a half percent. So I bet if you added it up, it would add up to something like that on our contract. So a lot of our members have went almost a full year without any adjustment, one year. Then we got it three-quarters of the way through, through free cash to get made whole. And then it missed the next budget, and, you know, so things have been in delay. But there's no, there's no raises, per se, in any of these adjustments. They're just the cost of living, the COLAs that were, that were missed.
Okay. And what, why, why are you going to, did you say you have a contract?
Yep, I'm in the Professional Supervisors Association. It's a three-year contract, so we're in our second year, I think, in a couple of weeks or here, you know, so, yeah. So these should reflect a one and a half percent for anyone in the PSA. So all the GRs that are listed there, which is, there's four positions there that are GRs, and those are the PSA.
Just remind me the jargon, so the GR and the PSA is what now?
Professionals, Supervisor, Professionals and Supervisors Association. You know, and it's sort of arbitrary, but the classification or rate, I just know because I know GRs are PSA. We use the term GR for grade. Ss are the steps for the NAGE employees. And other unions might use other things, but our chart is reflected by grade, GR.
All right. And is a, is a PSA, is that, is that a recognized union?
As far as I know, it is, and we file the paperwork every year.
By home?
Well, the city of Hoyoke and the state of Massachusetts.
Okay, so you're, it's a professional supervisor union of, of what, Hoyoke?
No, it's a Professional Supervisors Association. Union is just a term, association's a term. Anything you want to call it, we're a collective bargaining unit by law. So we're an independent union, like many unions are. We don't fall under the umbrella of another parent organization. We've chosen not to do so. It doesn't make it any more legal or any which way. It's, we're a collective bargaining unit.
And when was that established?
You know, I can't speak of all the, you know, this is the nineties. I don't know if it's really relevant to the budget tonight for me, but, you know. Yeah, it was a long time ago. I haven't been as long as, as the union's been here, you know, so I'm not the best resource.
It was originally established as just an association. Phil Chesky and a number of department heads got together. And then there was a question of some that could be part of it and some that weren't over the first two or three years. It was never used as a collective bargaining unit for at least the first five or six years of its inception. And then I believe in Mayor Sullivan's later terms, he did agree to, to use it as collective bargaining. We questioned it immediately as to not being notified when the first MOU came before us. But we have honored several MOUs, including this year, which would be the salaries Counselor Bartley's questioning at during the course of the year, and that's why the adjustments were made. We actually made a cut to a couple of these salaries in fiscal eight, two thousand and eighteen, although I said we already accepted the MOU and we couldn't cut it. But the cut was made, and then we had to put it back in when it was recognized that it was illegal for us to cut something that was already by a prior vote confirmed by this council. But we have at least on seven occasions recognized a collective bargaining agreement between the association and the, and the city.
Okay, just getting back to this. So, so the difference, the difference between the seventy-eight-oh-nine-oh and the seventy-nine-two-six-one, that is a, that's a cost-of-living adjustment pursuant to your collective bargaining agreement with the city?
That's correct. I believe this July first, we have a one and a half percent cost-of-living adjustment for every member of the PSA. So there's about twenty members, mostly department heads, but also professionals in the city.
Okay, thank you.
No, I just, again, the MOU is in the Finance Committee. We all have copies of it.
Counselor Sullivan?
Damien, on object number five-three-zero-one-zero, the other contracted services. Where are we at right now this year? Is there money coming back to the general fund?
Honestly, I think other contract services and demolition are both zeroed out. And part of it is, I ran a purchase order for, if you remember, the veterans monument in the war memorial. So while Jesus got a grant for fifty percent reimbursement, we worked on that together. I did the purchase order for the full amount, so likely half of that will come back, but it was about eighty-five hundred dollars. I wanted to, to lock in the money to, to get it going. It's for Chickaby Industrial. And that's just to take them out and move them. So hopefully, we can get those guys started. we can get those guys started, because he's still waiting on the grant, so I want to...
I'm familiar with that one.
Yeah, get it out of the way and not mess around with it. So we actually have those zeroed out at this point.
That was my only question.
Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, so the demolition, Damian, so the $100,000, is that in addition to the potential of using the revolving fund for demolition? Or is that, that doesn't include the revolving fund, correct?
It's completely independent, so historically, we've spent on average $450,000 in demolition, and so this is, numbers fluctuated quite a bit over the years, that's been allotted to our department. The good thing about this money in our department is there's no strings attached, so we can use it on a property and not have to have an end use, per se, with like block grant money. And, so yes, to answer your question, it's in addition to whatever's in the revolving fund and in addition to whatever's in the block grant money, whatever grants I might apply for and receive. Still not much, but...
Yeah, I hear you, and I can take care of my award and you know that. Okay, thank you.
Hey, Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you, Damian, for coming down and for the work you're doing with departments. Good to hear that, you know, the money that's coming in is increasing and will continue to increase, hopefully, in the next coming years. The question I have is on the inspections, Plumbing and Gas, 53040, is that, is that a correct number, or expended in 2018, $18,000?
It is, and that's because that was, excuse me, a year that we were unable to find the plumbing inspector, so we were partially, we had the East Hampton Plumbing and Gas Inspector come in, so we, you know, we're moving the money around to...
To pay that.
From the salary into the, yeah, to pay the per diem amounts.
And you feel that the $3,000 that you're asking for, that's for both of those, electrical and plumbing?
That's to cover vacation time, really. It's, and it's probably more than enough, it's more than enough when they're new employees, because they only get two weeks. But, you know, if anything ever happened, we'd have a little buffer if somebody got sick or whatnot.
Right, right.
But it's more than enough, and we wouldn't need $3,000 for two weeks, and then for, when employees are here a long time, they get four weeks vacation, it would be more, but that's kind of the average.
Right, and the in-state travel, is that pretty much utilized that much? You asked for $10,000, I know you utilized $11,000. The $9,000, is that something that you feel is going to be needed this year, too?
We're definitely going to need $9,000. I think we're approaching 12 or 13 at this point, and I got to find ways to reduce that in my department.
Right.
But it's, part of that bump was because of hiring a new inspector, and we took over paying for the mileage for the block grant inspector.
Right.
When it was paid for block grant, for the sake of simplicity, it's not a lot, but it adds $1,000 a year.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? There's no one further. Thank you very much for coming down tonight.
Thank you.
Officer Planning, Economic Development. Board of Health.
Good evening.
Hello. So I will start off by saying I did not create this budget, but I was witness to its creation. For the most part, other than some already bargained increases in personnel line items, for the most part, the expenses were level funded when it was submitted, after it's been reviewed by the mayor's office. Some items were already cut, so the expenses are actually lower than they were submitted last year.
Any questions, Counsel Bradley?
Yeah, congratulations on your new job.
Thank you.
Are you part of the Professional Supervisors Association?
I am.
Did you, how come you didn't get a COLA?
I...
I mean, did...
I requested, so I am budgeted at 66,904, and the requested is 68,587, which is what, that's just the step that's in there that was negotiated.
That's a step?
Yep.
Right.
I think it's 1.5%. Do believe. I didn't, again, I didn't make this budget. Brian put this budget together before he left, but that's, I believe, the next step. I think the 66,904 is, that's what he was budgeted at last year, and that's what I was hired at, and then the 68,587 is just the 1.5 increase on that.
And when you, have you gone through your whole budget for this coming year?
I have looked through it, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, so are there some things you want to point out? I mean, I don't really see too many.
I mean, there's nothing in here that, I'm still kind of learning, you know, before, as an inspector, I wasn't involved directly with budgeting and expenses directly, so I'm still kind of learning the line items and how they're being used, so I, you know, I don't feel confident in saying I can comfortably cut, you know, 500 or 1,000, because I haven't gone through a fiscal year with any of these items yet.
No, I wouldn't expect you would. I think that'd be a little bit unfair to do that. You're almost in the same position as a personnel person was last year when that person started, so, kind of new to the budget, so you're walking into somebody else's prepared budget. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Bacon.
Do you know which department your clerk floats to?
Building.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Counsel Murphy, then Sullivan?
Yeah, first, thank you for your help.
No problem.
I've been very pleased with the first couple of the months on what he's doing. He's quick to respond, and I'm not trying to knock off your raise, but you only started, what, three months ago?
I did, yeah.
So, and this is, and maybe, I don't know the answer, maybe you don't know the answer, but with all due respect, I'm giving you a $1,600 raise after three months. That's a pretty good start.
It's negotiated as part of the position, so it's not like something that is, it couldn't be, it's not changed or anything like that.
So it's not by person, it's by position?
It's by position, yeah, and so that position, there was a three-year, as Damian said, I believe, a three-year agreement.
Yeah.
And so they're already negotiated. It happened when I started as a member of the Clerks Union as well, you know, I started in December, I got like a 1% raise January 1st, it's just part of the position.
Okay, and as you know, I'm pretty active with vacant buildings.
Yes.
And you got $10,000 for board and secure, and which I certainly think we probably need more, because just...
I would say, I wouldn't ask for more in this case, as we have been given a lot more freedom with the vacant building revolving fund that we have there, and I think that,
Okay.
if we're trying to reduce some expenses, I think we can lean on that for the time being.
Okay. And... The Supplies Emergency Health?
So that is for the War Memorial. Essentially, what I was told by Brian is that those $5,000 are there if there was ever, say, a natural disaster or a serious issue with a building collapse, like happened a few years ago on New Year's Day, and that money is specifically earmarked for opening the shelter and any unexpected expenses, like having to feed or house or supply people who are suddenly, you know, out of their home or out of their building.
And that is, it goes, so they would be sheltered at the War Memorial?
That is our city shelter.
Okay. And the last one was the fee for their, and it's revenues, for the mass rental voucher inspection?
So those are actually, the mass rental voucher, those are revenues.
Right.
What we do is, if you, if an owner of a building were to have units available for rent, and those units are eligible, or they're requesting monies from state programs such as Section 8, or other grants or funds that come, you're required to do Massachusetts Rental Voucher Program inspection. We go there and make sure that the unit is code compliant before it's occupied.
Okay, and then you get paid for that.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you for your good work so far.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yep, thanks. Sean, back to the first page, and if any of these, you know, you don't have an answer, I can go to the auditor later tomorrow or whatever, but the Substitute Nurses, line item 51203?
Yes.
As of halfway through the year, nothing had been spent there at all. In the previous year, there was nothing. Where are we at right now with that, do you know?
I don't believe that it has been used. The Substitute Nurse is in case the public health nurse would ever need assistance. Again, this would be in cases of like a foodborne illness outbreak or other issues, I believe that's there to support the public health nurse, should there be an emergency.
Okay, so it's a placeholder?
It is.
And 53010, Professional Health Services, again, it was only 2,500 in '18, we'd only spent 860 bucks halfway through the year, we still...
Professional Health Services, that one is specifically for TJ O'Connor and Bremen and some other outside contractors. It specified as coverage for backup animal control, cremation services for animals that are not covered in the annual contract, or miscellaneous services as needed, emergency preparedness consultants, things like that. So again, those are, it's there as if there was an unexpected cost or there were fees that weren't covered with a TJO contract.
Okay, do you know how much is left in it this year still?
I don't believe that there has been much activity in that one. I do know that there is a proposed line item transfer. I think that was just heard in the last City Council meeting, a $5,000 into that, but that's contingent on whether or not the council decides to join the mosquito control district, but I don't believe that there's much movement in there, I'm not a 100%.
All right, and the Teen Pregnancy Prevention Service?
So...
Nothing was spent?
I... I don't, I'd have to take a look at that one. That's run by Cindy Miller from Hashpak, and she does outreach, does information, goes to meetings, and she also provides contraceptives to several organizations, so that's throughout Hampton County Tapestry. I actually have, let's see here, they go to the Care Center, River Valley Counseling, MSP PC, and the Hoyoke Health Center, but I'd have to look and see exactly what the expenditure is. I don't think that it's zero at this point.
Do you think you'd email us something in the next few days?
Yeah, I actually reached out to Cindy Miller to get clarification on where she was, what her regular outreach is and where she was going, so she was very responsive. I could get you something soon.
All right, and we're kind of the same on this wellness. It was only $1,200 in '18, we'd only expended 800 halfway through the year.
Yeah, wellness was...
Do we need $6,000 for a placeholder there?
I'd say that that could probably be reduced. That was initially, that grant was a position that was grant-funded, and now it is primarily operated by our public health nurse, Debbie, and a lot of that is, they do like incentives to lower city insurance rates by, they do health screenings, they do certain programs of, or offer vaccines to city workers, they do trainings about stress reduction or regular exercise, but I don't know that with all the work that Debbie does, that she's capable of using all, you know, $6,000.
Yeah. All right. And then I think the last one, back to the vacant building boardup. We're using money out of the revolving fund, but we have it over here also?
So this predated the revolving fund, and I would say that the revolving fund, there's actually sort of a lot of work earmarked for demolitions that are coming up, and...
Yep.
if some of those expenses are as what we expect them to be, I don't know that there will be that money available. Before, the revolving fund was sort of, it was supposed to be, when it was initially created, it was a $50,000 limit annually, and it was used for small projects, but now that we have a greater spending cap, you know, we're looking to take down 107 Clemente, and then there are several other buildings, like 616 South Summer and some other ones that are in line.
I get all of, I get all of that, there's a lot more that can go, but...
So I think it's going to be zeroed very shortly, and then we wouldn't have any funds available if there were unforeseen expenses that came up.
Yeah, right now, it appears to be kind of a duplication of...
The way it was written, yeah, because it did, it preexisted the revolving fund, and so that was what we used before the revolving fund existed, to do boardups at city properties or abandoned buildings that were privately owned.
Yep.
And so now there's sort of an overlap, but like I said, I think that we're going to end up spending that revolving fund down quickly on other larger projects that aren't boardups and cleanups.
Okay.
Counsel Murphy, and then Counsel Bacon.
So based, going back to the vacant buildings, this, I'm assuming this is where you're getting the money for the contractor for 616 South Summer Street, is that it?
That's typically how, we'll pay them out of there.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Counsel Bacon?
Thank you. I just have a question about the boarding up process, because I remember a few years ago, we had a big discussion, and we were moving from the plywood to a different...
Polycarbonate.
...thing that you could also see through.
Yes.
That would hopefully be more durable.
Yeah.
So if I'm still seeing plywood, it's probably the older boards and that, so if we're seeing broken plywood that then you're going to have to fix, are you taking that off and using the new material?
So we, the city does not board with plywood, we have not since, I believe Damian drafted that.
Yeah, it was a few years ago, yeah.
So we never use plywood, we instruct all of our, you know, contractors never to use plywood, but...
It's just the old stuff.
Unfortunately, what also unfortunately happens is, many banks and financial institutions are from out of the city, and they hire exclusively contractors from out of the city.
Oh.
And they're, they don't take the time to get building permits in many cases, much less review our regulations.
Okay.
And then they throw up plywood boardups.
Oh, all right, so...
And then we have to go to court, and it takes a very long time to get that off, and it's sort of, you're caught in the middle where you can order them to remove it, but then it's going to take them even longer to get new boardups on there, and there's this sort of difficult middle ground, yeah.
All right, but in general, that's working better?
It is, it's great, and a lot of, I would say the reason that you don't see it is because a lot of the properties that are boarded with polycarbonate, unless you're looking for it, you really...
You don't jump out.
You don't see it, and so that's why you only see the plywood ones.
Thank you.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yeah, found what I was looking for before, Sean. Back to the wellness budget line. You know, have you seen these before?
I have.
Were these part of the budget for the wellness program?
Those were from several years ago, I believe, and I think that they were distributed by one of the wellness coordinators. There was Julia when I first started, and then there was Lynn Denise.
I need a lot, what we have here is a notepad. That's what the money was spent on, notepads. Wellness, that's what it says, workplace wellness, making, make working for Hoyoke work for you.
Those were distributed before I was...
I'm not, don't get me wrong, I'm just looking at the budget item and what it was used for.
Yeah, just on that statement, I, it was a few years ago, and I remember the wellness, we had a coordinator here, and we actually had meetings, I was part of that, where you had the Police Department, the Fire Department, Gas and Electric, City Hall. They did things, smoking sensation, any type of exercise, they gave out little things, pedometers, they had people walk in the City Hall, how many miles, I think it was working great, and like you stated earlier, it was something that actually would cut down on the insurance rates at the city. You know, we had people that were, you know, keeping a, like a Fitbit and working out. I mean, great to see that back again, other than, you know, I wasn't aware of this, but when I was on it a few years ago, they actually had monthly meetings.
It was, it was good.
And I think it was very effective, sort of just went away because of the grant or whatever went away, but I think it'd be great to try to get that back in here, and it could be, you know, make healthier employees, and it could save some money, insurance rates, so.
I agree with you. I mean, I think that when there is an active person who's dedicated to it, there's a lot more time. And they had, like you said, they had events at the Wisteria Hearse. They tried to get all the city departments involved. But once the grant ran out, I think there was just this line item. And, you know, it was kind of given to Debbie to do and I feel bad, you know, I don't want to hang her out to dry here. But it's just not her top priority. And I think that's why it's gone a little to the wayside.
Anyone further?
Thank you very much for coming down. Next is Park and Rec. They emailed saying they had a conflict, so they won't be here purchasing or wanting. Last was Library and Wisteria Hearse. You want to both come in? And well, it's almost nine o'clock. If we can try and not keep you here any longer. Last time we were here till ten. I don't think we want to break that record, so.
No, we don't want to do that.
You want to come on in?
Thank you for inviting the library, so.
And take any of the seats that are open.
Thank you, Maria.
And there's forty-one and forty-four. Thank you. Yeah, leave them here and we'll, we'll get it to everybody.
Thanks. I'll take one.
Can't make you me, right?
I pushed it, yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll turn it over. We'll start with the library, then go to the museum, Wisteria Hearse. Anything you want to point out in the budget or anything we should know?
Well, in, in the library case, it's very self-explanatory. Most of what we're asking for is for personnel. There is a very little bit increase from the previous year. And that's because one staff member left. And what I'm asking is to increase some of the hours of the library assistants that are part-time to cover some of those hours that the person left.
Any questions for the library? Counsel Murphy, then McGivern?
Yeah, Maria, and I know we talked about this. So some of your employees have, it appears, not had a raise for a while, unless that's been changed.
Well, thanks to the committee here, eight out of the twenty-two got a raise, a three percent raise last year.
Yeah, but the others?
About six, six months ago, maybe. That brought a couple of them to minimum wage, the twelve dollars plus a little bit more. I still have a couple that are under twelve, but none of the other's employees have received any raise.
I mean, and obviously we're in tight financial times. And, but it seems to me like, first of all, we should be making sure that if we've hiring people, we're paying them a true living wage. So I, and I know we can't go ahead and give, give out raises and do that. But it seems to me like just from a argument of fair labor practices, if nothing else, that, you know, we should be trying to figure out a way to make sure that no one that works for the city is below minimum wage or really in reality, near minimum wage. So, I mean, I don't know what we can do, but I know you've been trying to get it and I appreciate your efforts. And I, I'm pretty sure your staff appreciates the efforts, but.
Yeah, we don't have any step increase, so I can't go and ask for a step increase. I can't ask for anything else. The library salary schedule already offers. And we're already, everybody up to the max, so there's no, no place to move. Unless the new salary schedule is approved, the library has no place to grow.
Counsel McGivern, Counsel Sullivan?
Mr. President, I was going to try and do two things this evening and for the finance committee. If nobody objects, I'm not too sure I can do it. Maria, the, the assistant director of the library, is that position filled?
No. The, the one that left, no. What I'm doing is I'm asking, which is minimum wage, the part-time library assistants to get extra hours.
Okay. In vacation buyback and sick leave buyback, do you have someone retiring?
No, we do not at this moment that I'm aware of. And usually we do that from the, from what they're being paid. If they leave before the full year is completed, that's where we transfer to the buybacks. So we don't, we don't usually ask.
What, what are buybacks?
That's when somebody still have vacation to them that they didn't use before they retire or they leave or the sick time.
In a, in a year? Well, I just asked if anybody was retiring, but nobody's retiring.
No, so that's why we don't have.
Because it looks like you're looking to transfer money into vacation buyback and sick leave buyback.
Those are because they are people that are working at this present time that between now and June thirtieth, they are going to be taking their vacation time and sick time as a regular year that they do. And because we don't have enough money in those budget lines, because we have been giving more hours to the library assistants to cover for the person that left, we have to transfer some of that money there to pay them for those vacation and sick time that they will be taking till the end of June. Like if I have vacation time between now and June thirtieth, that will come from my budget because it's still there in the line item. But if I have a library assistant that is going to take time off, vacation or sick time, because they work past their twenty hours, because I asked them to work more because we were shorthanded, now I need to get money to pay them for that sick time and vacation time. I'm running low on the library assistant line item. So that's supposed to cover that.
Excuse me, I understand. You, you were in before, earlier this year and explained that.
Yeah.
But I'm not too sure that use of vacation buyback, I understand what you're doing. But I don't think it's supposed to be coming out of those line items. You need additional money for a custodian?
They work more time, yeah. In the winter time, they spend more of their hours removing ice and snow than usual.
So are all these positions per diem?
Yes.
And they don't work full-time?
Many of them do not, especially the library assistants. They are part-time.
I understand, okay. Thank you.
Hey, with Counsel Sullivan?
Thank you. We're looking, what's going on with the energy line item that's going up?
Well, usually, yeah, usually we, before the end of the fiscal year, the library ends up paying from endowment, from private funds and donations towards the energy because we spend more than what the city provides us with.
So in twenty eighteen, we provided you with fifty thousand and you spent more than that?
In twenty eighteen, it was seventy-two.
Uh, well, that's fiscal twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
We, budget's seventy-two, so that, that was a twenty-two thousand dollar increase over the previous year. And now we're looking at another twenty-two thousand dollar increase this year.
Some of that money from the forty-nine to the thirty-eight. Some of that money was not used, I believe it was given back to the city because we ended up paying ahead of time with our own money, that then we didn't have to use it. And then we went to the seventy-two.
Well, the thirty-eight number is just what was spent this year, halfway through this year, which would mean you're tracking somewhere around seventy-six thousand or, yeah, seventy-six, seventy-eight thousand. But you're still requesting ninety-four.
There's also a magic number that the library has to, I mean, the municipality. I think I gave you in the packet that I gave you. For the library not to fall, like in nineteen eighty-nine, that we were decertified, the municipality has to comply with a certain amount of money, which is the three, the average of the three previous years plus one point twenty-five percent increase. I cannot add that increase in the personnel because I'm not allowed to ask for increase. So I put it there. If we don't use it, you get it back. At least then I meet the requirement. The city also complies with a requirement for us to get the state aid and be certified.
Boy, I'll be honest, you're completely losing me.
Okay, the, the library gets the state aid, some money from the state. It's meant for public, for public library and it comes to the city. But it's only to be used by the library. The city cannot spend that money. And it cannot deduct it from, from the annual appropriation. So that's a compensation just to reward the city for supporting the library and giving the annual appropriation. We also have some requirements that we have to follow, which is we have to open a certain amount of hours a year, so many days. We also have to be open and free to everybody. We also have to be able to serve the surrounding community, the, the interlibrary loans. So we borrow from other libraries and we also lend to other libraries. So those are all requirements that we need to comply with in order to get the state aid. The, the one for the city, the municipal appropriation, that requirement is one of the most essential one for us to qualify because we can be decertified if, if the city doesn't support us. So by showing that we, that the, that the city is giving the library the share, which is the average three plus the one point twenty-five. And like I say, I can't ask for, for that one point twenty-five to be added to the personnel because I don't have a step increase that I can ask for. I can't ask for cost of living increase, nothing like that. So I just put it down in the energy, which is one of the areas that we use. And that way, that money that we don't spend with endowment to pay for energy, I can use for programs, buy books and everything else that we need to do. I can sit down with you and explain to you all that if you want. I believe I also have here the, the law that says in regards to what the requirements are, what the city has to do-
Oh, that would be good.
-and what the library needs to do in order to participate of the annual appropriation from, from the state, which is called the, the annual appropriation.
Could I have a copy of that also, please?
Excuse me?
Could I have a copy, please?
I'll, I'll send it to you because I only brought that one.
Oh, okay. Well, Mike can send it to me.
Yeah.
I'll just, yeah, I'll just send it to you. Yeah, because it's the laws that tells what are the requirement from a municipality in support of the library and what are the responsibility of the library in order to participate of the state aid.
Well, if that, if that's the responsibility of the city, why is the management fee disappearing altogether?
What, what management? Oh, that was during the construction for the bond. It's a whole process with the, maybe-
Complicated.
Yeah, maybe Tom McGee will know more about it. Todd, do you remember about the whole process?
It was when it was the construction.
Five three zero one zero.
Yeah. So that was, that was for seven years. The seven year ended last December. So now the city has not, doesn't have the responsibility to give us that money anymore because that was for the new tax market.
Mike, the answers are up above where it just says library schedule. Everything's library schedule.
Okay.
We have no idea what that means, but we've accepted it for decades, right, Maria?
Yes, we have.
Hey, Counsel Lacy? Counsel Lacy?
Oh, she can go, that's okay. Yeah, thanks for coming down, Maria. I think it seems in some ways, in order to kind of like maintain the funding levels that you need, you're kind of lumping things into light items that don't necessarily reflect what they're going to be used for. So it may, it may be useful in the next year to work with the city auditor on the creation of some, some new line items that are more meaningful. I think for, for, for both the city council to understand like where they're sending some money and be able to track those dollars a little bit better. But also so that you, you can more easily demonstrate to the state that the city is making the minimum payments that we need to. I, I just feel like some of the, you don't have enough, you know, bins to put all your dollars in and they're kind of getting lumped together. I also don't know if regarding your library assistants, I don't, I don't see any reason why you couldn't put more money into those line items, even if the step isn't there. So like whatever their salaries are and you have however many people working for how much time, it's going to be a number. But I hear what you're saying. You want to give them more time. But I don't understand why you couldn't just accelerate that line item number despite the fact that there's no step behind there.
I did. Um, I'm putting one person from a part-time to a full-time. So from twenty hours, she's going to be moving, if this is approved, to thirty-five. And the other four people that are part-time, they're going to be getting also some extra hours. So from twenty hours, they might be getting twenty-five. You know, for twenty-five, they might be getting thirty. So there are also, so that's already included there.
But what about the vacation and buyback?
That's taken from that line item.
So you're pulling it out of there and putting it in?
Yeah, that's how they, yeah.
Okay.
They, they put in their request, so in one week, they work five, four days and one day is sick or vacation. That gets paid from that line item. That's the way that I was told to do it.
Do you mind me asking who?
Oh, it's been years ago.
It's years ago.
Since I started, yeah.
Yeah, because I, I just don't see why you couldn't put their, their sick and vacation time into that same line item for the personnel expense. I understand that they don't have a step that would reflect that money in that salary line item. But, but if they're working the hours, then they should be able to access it.
Yeah, that's why they, the extra hours that I have asked for are there. I can take some of that ninety-four and put it into the buybacks if that will work for you.
No, I just, I'm just kind of feeling like, you know, the-
Next year, that's the way that I would do it?
Yeah, so instead of using that line item.
The personnel, most of them?
Yeah, because I think that the, the vacation and buyback signals to us something different, right? And in order to be able to like understand where money's going and how different departments are spending it, we want to be able to-
Okay, so what, what do you call the buybacks? What, what is that for? How do I use that?
That's when people retire because you, we owe them money.
Okay, so therefore I don't have anybody retiring.
Yeah.
So that's why I can put it. But if somebody in the middle of the year resigns and they still have sick time and vacation, then that's where I just move some of that money to the line item.
So you do, so you do need it in vacation, I'm sorry.
So you want me to have it there even though nobody's going to resign or retire? You want to seize money in that line item? I just don't understand.
No, if you, if you can reasonably anticipate that nobody's going to be retiring, like there shouldn't be, there shouldn't need to be that buffer there. I mean, maybe there, there should be something small there in case somebody unexpectedly retires. But really, if it was, if those monies were living in the personnel line items for those different positions, then if they had, if they had, you know, resigned and they had vacation days owed, the money would still be in their personnel line item. So I, I just, I just think it's a better like accounting process. It's not, it's not that anything is wrong or the budget doesn't balance. It's, it's just in order for both parties, like you know where the money's going. But we're asking a lot of questions because we're trying to figure out the map of how money's being spent. So I just think it may be worthwhile to sit down with Tanya and figure out if we can create either additional line items or, you know.
Yeah, because the line items are there. It's just that we-
But there's nothing...
The only time that we ask is when, yeah. It's, it's right there. It's already five, 405, I mean, 4,550. It's already in that line item there. It's already in the budget.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Then, so then it's just a matter of using it?
If I have, um, nine months of sick time accumulated, can I start asking for that money without retiring? I didn't think I could, right?
No.
So...
Last year with the parent department.
I have somebody who's, has, um, just about that amount of sick time. And if he decides to retire, then, then I'll look for it. But for now, he's not planning on retiring.
Yeah, and that's fine. I, I, and I, I understand that, but I thought that you were, um, loading up some of your oth- other line items?
No, the only, the only place again, because we do go through a lot in the gas and electricity because of the heating and cooling of the building. That's why I put the money there. But just keeping in mind that if you cut, there's a certain amount that you cannot go below, otherwise we'll lose certification, which means we'll lose, uh, the state aid.
Uh, and in some ways, I definitely think that that's something that should be carved out somewhere so it's really easily identifiable, and we can say, this is, this is what it is. This is what it's going to. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my only comment. I, I just think that it would be easier for us to see where, where, which monies are going where. And the line items help us do that.
That's, um, I'm, uh, excuse me, the longevity is the 4,000. We did not put anything for the vacation sick time, but next year we can. But again, if that is, if you're planning or you know that somebody's going to retire or resign, then you prepare, but nobody's saying bye-bye.
Then I guess I misunderstood what, what you were talking about in terms of putting, putting money into that line item.
That is because of the, like, this fiscal year they're sending in Jan.
There's a, a transfer in the finance committee.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
I used executive privilege to try to get Maria to come into the finance committee a week from Monday, but now I have more questions than what I asked.
Yeah.
So I have to be here Monday?
Yeah.
If, not this Monday, no.
Oh.
No. If, if we do call you in, you'll be number one, though. Because Todd made you number, uh, 99 tonight, you know?
12, 12 oh 13.
And 13 out of 13.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you for having us.
Um, yeah, I see that you have some flexibility in the longevity, if you need it. And, um, I've been talking with the auditor because last year, when I filed that order to do, change the ordinance so that the people could get the increases, um, that's the only way that we can do it right now. And I'm interested, and I really want to understand thoroughly that law that you just gave to Counsel Sullivan because we just ended that seven-year period. And so it'll be important for us to get our arms wrapped around that because to me, it looks like you have potentially 20 to 22,000 dollars. If that is the mandated level of funding, and that is what we're committing to, that we can look at, um, allocating within your budget. So it's just going to be important for us to understand that law and how it will apply so that you don't get cut...
Below.
Too low.
Too low.
And that perhaps that money can be reallocated in a way that's better for your operation. So I'll, I'll be looking at that, and I'm working with Tanya on that, too.
Yeah, so I'll send you by tomorrow. You'll get a copy of that, everybody.
Yeah.
I'll send it to everybody.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify one thing because last year, when we did the first raise for about three people, later on, Tanya came back and said we had missed some people, and that's why we did the retro later in the year?
Well, out of the 22, only, only eight got the, the 3%, and then...
Correct.
Those, the same eight got the retro.
So what our understanding at that time was, and it may have to do with their classification in, in jobs, was that those were the people that fell into that category?
Yes, they were below, yeah.
Or because they were full-time or something, or, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But that's the way...
Yeah, I know, according to the, the order that I saw, yeah.
Yeah.
Those, those were the only one that would qualify under that way of, uh, the way that it was ordered.
Right, and that's the, the way it came out of the auditor's office. So we just need to get a little better understanding of that. Because it looks here, according to the library schedule, that it looks like people are getting a small kind of cola on the schedule from left to right. Like, if you're going from 54 to 55 in the budget, if you're going from 40 to 66. It looks like some people are getting raises.
But it's not, it's more hours.
Is all of this more hours in the entire budget?
Yeah, this is, uh, according to already the increase that they got last year. I did not increase anything in regards to the, the rate.
Okay.
These are more hours.
Okay, so what we're seeing in here is the results of the re- increase last year. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, with the more hours, with more hours.
Okay, and so that changed the base. Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
I turn it over to the museums, um, page 44.
Yeah, I mean, the only, um, major change, and it's, um, still fairly modest, is, uh, an increase in the repair and maintenance. And that has to do with some very specific repairs related to, um, some safety issues, um, and safety of our collection issues. And normally, um, in years past, I've been able to cover that kind of repair out of our revenues. Um, but I am anticipating this year some disruption in our revenue based on the, um, limited use of the music room, which some of you, I think, have heard about, and some of you may not. But we do have some electrical concerns. So we've been, um, restricting that space, and that space is our primary revenue source. So, um, as much as possible, I've tried to adapt our budget, um, to a more modest prediction of those revenues. But that 5,000, um, extra in, uh, repair and maintenance, I can tell you exactly. Um, we have been having a lot of problems with the climate control in the archives, um, every summer for the last three years, based on the spikes in temperature that we're getting. So that system has trouble, um, uh, when the temperature goes from 40 degrees at night to 90 degrees during the day, which we've had in the last couple of years. So this is, um, instead of paying a lot to fix it when it breaks, and our archival collection's in crisis, like what happened last year, some of this will go to some preventative maintenance, um, at the beginning of the summer. Um, the other things are really simple, too. We have a chimney that's losing bricks and are, are dropping into the ground, so I like to get that fixed. And we have two bulkhead, um, doors, exterior doors that are rotting, um, and should anyone climb on them, they'll fall through. So, um, it's a very specific amount of money, and those are what it's for. And, um, I just, and as I said, in years past, we've been doing these minor repairs as they come up and using revenues. But I, I am, I just want to make sure that we have the money should anything happen to the music room.
Hey, Counsel Arfson?
Yeah, thank you. And we've talked, and you know my concern, and I, I mean, I know we're losing revenue by not being able to use certain things.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I know the city engineer, and I have talked, I know you and I have talked, uh, and I know the Public Safety Committee's going to be taking this up again.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, you know, the city engineer is significantly concerned about the electrical safety issues.
We all are, yeah.
Uh, and so, I mean, I, I wonder if we were in a position where we could get that totally corrected and then use the additional revenues that you would be making by being able to have your facility open if we couldn't use those additional revenues to offset some of the capital expense to fix the problem?
Mm-hmm.
So if you can give me an estimate as to what kind of revenue you think you're losing on a yearly basis?
Uh, I can't predict that because there's still too many moving pieces on the electrical. So we're all very concerned, um, and we're, we've, we've got, um, some potential funds lined up. But what we still have to go through is the, um, State Historic Commission review on that and some meetings with the electrical inspectors. And so the question about the revenues really has to do with how long we would be out of commission or if we would be, I'm not even totally sure we would be. Um, I, I'm leaning towards thinking that there will be a period of time when we are doing pretty extensive renovations and repairs in the house, and that will limit it. Um, I just, I don't want to stay for certain, and I don't want to give a revenue projection that is really based on, um, no concrete, uh, explanations yet of, of what timetable it has to be. We're also, um, I, I do think that, that I have potential funds identified, um, in various places to go after for those repairs on a bigger scale. And that's part of why, um, having the funds in place to get, to get these ones done quickly so that our fundraising can focus solely on the electrical repairs, um, that are, you know, we're talking about, you know, a $300,000 range project. Um, then I can kind of focus on that and, and do that. But I, as soon as I get that plan, everybody will hear about it because it is, it's a major process. But those are the two steps. We're, we're meeting right, um, currently with the electrical inspector, and then the Mass Historical Commission has to weigh in a little bit.
And are they providing, excuse me, Mass Historical Commission providing funding? Is that, or are they just kind of giving you guidance on what you can and can't do?
So two, so one is that we did get, um, a small amount of CD BG money, um, to start to address the most crucial and most dangerous aspects of it, which is a fuse box in the music room. Um, and that, those funds kind of trigger a review from Mass Historical. But also, Wisteriahurst is, um, under a deed restriction with the state. So Mass Historical, anything we do, um, that rises to a certain level of repairs and maintenance, um, they're going to come in and do a review and approve it. We, it, it, that will really depend on how extensive it is. So we've kind of laid out a plant, like, a worst-case scenario plan is the 300,000. Um, but we're, there's a possibility that we'll get in and be able to take care of, um, some of the most crucial repairs at a much lower level, get those done, in which case, Mass Historical's not going to, not going to need to weigh in that much. Where they're going to come in is if we have to go into walls, ceilings, disrupt paint, disrupt plaster. And that's a piece that I honestly don't have an answer to yet. We only know the starting point, and until we're, until we're in the, in there and fixing it, we won't know the extent of what we need to do.
Okay, one last question. So the money that you're seeking, the funding, the sources that you're seeking, if the city were to be able to begin that process and give you suf- sufficient funds to do it, would the sources you're seeking be willing to reimburse even if the city had already paid? Or are they only coming where?
Probably not. No, yeah. Um, and I think, you know, the one thing I'll say is that the issue with the funding sources that are available to us is they're about a year out. Um, so that's where, eh, the question is really going to become, you know, if this, if the city could provide anything that would help, it's going to, it's, it's a pu-, it's a moving puzzle right now, to be honest, and I'm trying to sort it all out. Right now, the, everything is secured. There's no public risk that we know of. We, we do know that, we've restricted areas. Um, but it, but in keeping the public safe, it has meant that we do, you know, we, we're not really plugging things into the music room. Um, we're doing a lot less events there, um, and that's our primary, primary space for that kind of thing. So, um, we're being as cautious as we can and taking, um, a real conservative route because it's such a safety issue, and not just for people in it, but for the house itself because obviously, fire is our worst nightmare at a historic home.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thanks. Um, I think you just answered his question, so I want to ask a different...
Okay.
Revenue.
Yeah.
When Wisteriahurst rents?
Yes.
Where does the revenue go?
Uh, it, it, 25% goes to the city, um, and 75% goes into our revolving account to be reinvested into Wisteriahurst.
Does the city create the revolving account?
Yes.
I'm jogging my memory.
Yeah. I do have those, I, I do see that they're not listed here, so I do have those numbers if...
I, I was curious, because I know this number's off.
It's not incorrect.
But then we're starting to explain, you know, because I know there's a lot more.
Um, yeah.
That, that's okay. Um, now, you do not have a library schedule, uh, get-out-of-jail-free card here. Vacation buyback and sickly buyback, is somebody retiring?
Uh, no, so, um, I do not have, yeah, so vacation buyback is because, um, my part-time positions aren't fully funded on this budget, so they come out of revenue. So it's there in case, um, a part-time person leaves without warning, which is, you know, I mean, a, a part-time person, they're maybe going for full-time work elsewhere. So if it happens in the second half of the year, those lines are depleted, and I want to make sure that there's something in there that I can pay it out of.
I think I understood that, but...
Do you want me to? So, so like, for instance, if we're looking at the program coordinator, who's 20 hours a week, her, um, true cost is a, a more than double the 87,000, I mean, sorry, 8,700 that's there. Um, and so in the second, when that depletes, we're paying out of revenues for her. It's, I mean, it's just, it's a tiny bit of cost saving that helps us out. It, it's probably not going to be used, um...
Across the board, we don't deal with a lot of per diem positions that are important positions.
Yeah.
And it's difficult. And they're also considered part-time, and that's why there is no vacation. There is, I don't think there's, in most cases, no sick time.
These three positions are all nage positions, the part-time, yeah.
It's just when we look at the budget, I think Rebecca said it as well as you could say it, you know, we're, we're looking at it different than the way it's being used in the last two budgets. Not saying there's anything wrong, the auditor is blessing it. So we'll talk to the auditor and say, hey, you know...
Um, I mean, from, from me, I'd be curious because I, I heard what was going on with that discussion, but in this case, it truly would be used for vacation buyback if somebody, um, resigned suddenly. If, in the case that there wasn't money left, because there, there's usually not money left in the line, so that transfer, um, that other people are talking about wouldn't exist for us.
All right, is, is the buyback and sick time buyback, is it, are they under contracts?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That's what you said, nage?
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else?
One more.
One more.
So, uh, energy, gas, and oil, and obviously, you're way down in terms of usage.
We're not, because that's cut off in December, so it got cold in January.
Yeah.
We're at 21,000 right now, and we're missing, um, our last bill. So I expect to use all of that, especially because in May, uh, we had to keep the heat on a little bit.
Ah, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I noticed that as well, and, but December was not very cold, so...
Anyone else? Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
We truly appreciate it. Um, with that, that's our list. I thank everyone for attending tonight. Um, we do have June 25th at 6:30 marked off on the calendar to do the budget. Remember, the budget has to be taken up on a different night than a full city council meeting, so we don't go till 3:00 in the morning. Um, so that would be June 25th, 6:30. It's a Tuesday, so we try to keep it on the Tuesday track.